I close order this work session of the Gilroy Division Board Director. First agenda item is the supplemental transportation plan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor Hunter. Good evening, board members. Tonight we'll receive a brief presentation providing an overview of what is on.
Everybody has already been visited once. But we just want to quickly go over it again. So a transportation supplemental plan or supplemental transportation planning, I've heard that say over the years. Is based on students that live in within the walk zone areas that have been designated as hazardous areas. And being made it gets determined that it's not safe for kids to walk. Through ODE, we then establish a supplemental plan which then allows us to receive that seventy percent reimbursement from ODE transporting the students. So just as a refresher, the supplemental, or sorry, the walk zones are secondary, so over seven through twelve is a mile and a half, and for elementary, you're going to six is combined with.
You know, they're super hard to follow.
So this just kind of gives a brief thing, and we compare hazard zones to look at, you know, like the amount of traffic. Are there designated crosswalks? Are there multiple lanes and speed, and also I just take the dishes for the students. It's up ahead of my slides here, I just got to see my brain. So if you just kind of go through the slide again, it comes in a little more detail, and that won't spend a lot of time on it, because I think all of you there on the current one. What's being here today is that with further developments around Tamara Elementary School, Southfield Bro area. As they're starting that next piece of construction, we had to make some adjustments to one area, and then we've expanded further south of the school where they have now pushed through Malia's Pass, open the new bridge into that area. If you look at the, on your slide, if you look at the top area with the blue arrow that's over. Originally, that red spot right there was originally a walk zone. However, with the number of students living in the apartments there, as well as additional businesses that are now going in there and opening, what we have quickly realized is that that street is becoming so easy with traffic and elevated speeds that even with a crosswalk and with a crossing guard, it's just not safe for the kids to cross there. The hope is that as part of the city, that they will continue to make some improvements that perhaps in the future, as expansion allows, they could go back. But for right now, it's just safer to have the kids, you know. Then if you move where the second blue arrow is down further south on the map, that's just in the street there in the red. And that is a result of Malia's Pass being extended, like I said, the bridge opening, which is bringing a higher level of traffic through there. That it's just, it's multiple lanes. In conversations with the city, they have determined that that will eventually be three lanes all the way through that piece of development. And it will be more of a, I think they call it like a thoroughfare or a pass to connect from T V Highway through the new Southfield Row, and eventually, after all of us in this realm will be retired, and when that happens, it'll eventually connect to Arlington. So that's the newest piece that's added. Does anybody have any questions about this? Or I know the math is hard.
This seems like it probably won't be the last time we visit the area.
No, no, I don't. And in fact, there's two areas that we're looking at. They're currently planning on moving to Witching Soul Road. I'm going to include sidewalks, so that may be the next one. And then as they further expand to the south, in Southfield Row. I will say that we did already plan for on the side of Malia's Pass. That was already kind of planned ahead, I mean, as a result. We just did not anticipate the bridge and all of that opening as previously did to include this second piece in the section. Question.
Anything in the future planning with this development and the city for mitigating these issues in the future?
There is, and it's, you'll be the route with the city, Southfield for actually third under construction. And the hope is at that time, that the land on the, was it the west side, Malia's Pass, where the apartments are that we talked about, that there would be lighter traffic, and that those kids would. As we got further into the development, a couple of things happened is, I think, more businesses ended up going in. I think also citizens in the community realized they can get off T V Highway to go over there. I mean, I did it myself when it first opened, this is cool. I think everybody's picked up on that. And, you know, a lot of this for me personally was, is there a group of apartments called the Zara Apartments? That is a board of apartments. And there is over eighty some students living right now in the yard. And it just seemed like those kids would use the road. And it was really having a negative impact on them, getting far and half, the kid now is pushed through, or they pushed through. I talked to the city at Great Lake, and I said, you know, school is right there, Tamara's right there, we can't end up in that same situation. And they have promised and put in their, into their plan, where there would be a different that would be a little more regulated, that would cross to Tamara to where it's the parent. There are also, there are sanctuaries that were roundabout as you're coming off of, if you speak to, I think at that point, now it's surgery. That will slow traffic down. So we will see. The new piece of section five that they'll develop first. It will have, it won't have apartments, but the outer layer will be town halls, densely populated, which tends to have more students, right? So there also will be a traffic light or a street that will eventually have, but between that and the traffic crossing guard.
Like, do you imagine to their day, like, be short bus ride? After a while? Like, we adding time to the student's day?
We are. I will say that with the development, the thing that will help is that we'll be able to utilize the bridge, so having to go out the two hundred and nine and come down that way. I don't know, you know, their bus ride will probably only be five to ten minutes. But I think if we have seen in the past historically is, you know, land needs to be equipped, and it's now slowing down. And I think that that's eventually what we'll see. So it could go long. I, I think that it will still be quicker than for the kids that are on the south. Thank you, I will, for your years of service, students that you have helped us with. Our next agenda item is.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just. Yeah, I'm just saying that Carol's lap, it's a forward work session, as you know, she's retiring this year, and so we just wanted to thank her for her years of service. Our students and our communities, her forward thinking, her planning has positioned us where we are now. And her expertise is invaluable and people greatly miss you. Thank you.
What do you think, I'll, oh yeah.
I don't like reading testings.
Oh, what are you like, part of the uh, you could use my.
I have to be an expert for sure. Thank you, thank you very much.
There's nobody better to talk to before. It's snows, I promise, it's all Carol, just checking.
Thank you.
And I would say, remember the transportation toward. If you're free, I've got a chance to do, yes, move toward that bus, a bit more than two light bus now? I thought so, we, we were foster appreciation, don't like doing one, like, hey, that's.
Thank you. Time of my life, pardon. I learned a lot. Our next agenda item is comprehensive sexual education review and update report. What's that being for us in that? I am filling in for Brooke today. And really, this is just part of the O A R that have to do by annual, annually to let me know about our plan and update for year twenty eighteen. And please, hope for you on this, and that you'll understand the process, understand when updates we have. Reported, updated, updated the plan and that we're into. That's the goal of today, and if we go to the next. This is the O A R in full effect. Let's go through it and share with you. No action expected from you on it, just providing with and then I just take it over to that, who's going to actually walk it all with this. So questions to the end, so we should kind of go through, but we understand sometimes those come in, but.
Yeah, so just to get us oriented in our conversation, I come here every couple of years and do an update. That when we are talking about comprehensive sexuality education, or C S E is our fortitude during the presentation today. It's a, it's a really broad list of standards and topics that we cover. So it's about things like basic human needs, like healthy friendships, healthy relationships. It's about displaying and receiving affection. It's about feeling valued and loved, sharing thoughts and feelings, and about giving our students the skills to set healthy boundaries. So as we go through today, I think that as we talk about C S E, it's, think of the broad scope of all the things that we probably should achieve in this education. Um, there are a lot, or so than most of our core content areas, that legislation and laws that connect to health education, in particular, human sexuality, C S E education. So two thousand and nine is when our legislature passed the Human Sexuality Education Law, which is really the umbrella that sets a lot of the guidelines and the content to be covered in our C S E instruction. I mean, soon after that, with the Healthy Teens Relationship Act, where we needed to have built in some explicit lessons about dating, domestic violence prevention in our secondary classrooms. Then Aaron's Law came in in twenty fifteen, which was talking about child abuse prevention. And we need to make adjustments to that. And then the last time I came and did an update to you, the state had just passed the Mental Dignity Act, which is more about providing period products in our schools to our students, but also does have an education component. The other topics that you see under here is the, the topics that are outlined by O D E and the standards for comprehensive sexuality. As we go through and adjust our program as needed throughout years during the continual improvement process, one of the things that we adhere to are some of the key terms and the key things set out in the, the laws, and what those mean and how we define them. So these have specific terms and guidelines and criteria for this. So O D E defines these terms, which helps us then as a school district, design our initial program that we had approved in twenty nineteen, but then also make our updates as needed. So for instance, when people ask, well, who determines what's age appropriate? We do get a definition from the Department of Education about what age appropriate means in the context of C S E. A new update since I came to the lab in our last update is the state of Oregon adopted the transformational social emotional learning standards. And around that same time, the state was also updating the comprehensive health education standards, which includes our C S E education standards as well. One of the things they purposely did during the update of these health standards was to ensure that they integrated and called out the T cell standards explicitly as, as they were updating the health standards. So as we think about what are our outcomes for C S E, because generally this is a unit, a unit of study that our students experience came through K through high school and in their schools. And what we're really looking at is that C S E instruction is a helpful health solution. It's a skill-based approach in order to prepare our students so that they can make healthy decisions throughout their life. A timeline of the process since we approved, since the board approved our plan in twenty nineteen. So we approved our initial plan for K through twelve, and then we were about ready to implement that plan in spring of twenty twenty. And then, well, we'll be in a minute, so it forced us to adjust this plan. However, we still did implement it, but we did have to make adjustments in order to change all of our instruction to hybrid. But we did continue with our C S E instruction in a way that worked with our comprehensive business learning that we were doing. I had to make some adjustments. There were some positive things that did come out of that that we had continued though. So for instance, our C S E kiosks that we added to every single one of our schools, so we have thirty seven kiosks for our parents to be able to review any of our curriculum prior to instructions, so that they're fully informed of the lessons that students are receiving. In twenty twenty, I came and did our first update to all of you, not technically, just actually two years after, but I think we got a little grace there from the pandemic. And so at that point in time, we did make some, provide some updates to the board about some adjustments that we were doing. So we had to update a couple of our high school lessons for medical linguistic accuracy. We replaced some duplicate lessons. We added some new supports for our students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And then we also planned to allow for some updates when publishers made updates. And then the mental dignity updates that we did as well. So that's where we left off the last time I came to. So since then, we were able to then fully implement our C S E plan as approved in twenty nineteen, now that we're back to full in-person instruction where our educators have the support and the professional development. So we've continued that process. And then with that, we really embedded a continuous improvement process in place in order to make sure that we are providing the best instruction and the best support possible for our students, families, and teachers. In late of twenty twenty four, so December, we heard from one of our partner organizations, CARES Northwest, which provides our instruction for our sixth and eighth grade curriculum, part of that instruction, that they would no longer be supporting curriculum. CARES Northwest is not a curriculum company, in that they basically were really filling a need that they knew existed with some new legislative changes that happened, and were provided some resources for educators across the state in order to meet some of those needs. But what they've realized as an organization is that sustaining inaccurate and medically accurate and constantly updated curriculum like C S E requires and needs was very difficult for them to do. However, they are allowing us to continue to use their curriculum. So while they will not be making updates to it, we will be continuing to use it, which we do plan to do for the next two years. Then shortly thereafter, in January of this year, we heard from one of our other partners, S A R, Sexual Assault Resource Center, who provides our high school curriculum, that they will also no longer be updating their curriculum. And the difference between CARES Northwest and S A R is that S A R has asked that we, after this school year, no longer using it as they are fully retiring. And so, as I'll share with you in a moment here, that led us to have to make some changes at the high school level. So we have been starting to communicate with our educators and our administrators about our high school curriculums based on our already approved list that we can utilize to fill this gap. And then I come to you today with our update, and then we'll continue to work throughout the summer and into next school year with the development of these lessons. And then by spring of twenty twenty six, we'll be ready to fully implement those updates for the high school plan. So just a reminder as we go through the C S E plan of instruction review, is that that, it really is to initially establish that process with the board and our staff, and that's what we did in twenty nineteen. Constant Revision Team, that's our continuous improvement process that we have established that allows us to get input and feedback, which I'll provide a little more explicit detail on in a moment. And then, of course, our biannual review and update report that I come to you every two years. So to detail that continuous improvement process, we've worked really hard to ensure that we have consistent and continuous feedback loops to get as much input on this as possible. So we do an annual survey to all of our administrators and our educators who implement these lessons across the district. We have it scheduled for our June K twelve meeting with our administrators. And we also do an annual senior exit survey, once they finish all of their C S E lessons, to get input and feedback from their experience. We do quarterly meetings with our secondary health teachers. We also do curriculum trainings. These are a combination of refreshers, but also our, every teacher who delivers our C S E curriculum for some of our companies are required to have professional development directly around that, especially our child abuse and sexual prevention lessons. And so any new educator that's at a new grade level or a new health educator, we've ensured that they get that training that they need annually. We also do the family notification of delivery, lesson delivery with opportunities to review the curriculum. So anything that's open source, we make sure is available on our website, but there's of course curriculum companies that don't allow us to provide open source materials on our site, and so that's why we have the C S E kiosks for families to be able to come in and review the curriculum in a, in a time and space that makes sense for that. And we also are in close contact with the Department of Education and our community partners that support C S E. We have our annual, our annual secondary C S E collaboration. So while our health educators are getting together quarterly to work on all health topics, we explicitly have at least once a year a full day where we're working with them on C S E implementation. And then annual professional development and support opportunities, which, since our son situation has improved over the last two years, we've really had an opportunity to get a lot more of our K six educators in, in that fold of receiving professional development around C S E instruction. So updating revisions from the twenty twenty two update. So this is the new things that, that are coming at you here. So the regular publisher updates to the approved curriculum, that's available to review prior to instruction. So these are things like, for example, most were based on Oregon Health Education Standards Update that I just mentioned, and so some of the curriculum companies have made adjustments to adhere to the newly adopted standards. Also internal edits to address minor things. So for instance, like a video was broken, so we had to fix some of our slide decks for the video. We also are piloting some C S E adjacent lessons for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And when I say adjacent, it really focuses on healthy relationships and boundaries. And then moving, the biggest update we have here is moving that new high school curriculum for the twenty five, twenty six school year. And so we're currently provide, that's been since twenty nineteen provided by S A R, but because they're retiring their curriculum, we need to make an update. So the high school update, again, just want to emphasize that this is not because we feel S A R is providing a bad curriculum or a bad product, but rather they are retiring it. This was never their purpose. They really are a community-based organization to provide direct resources and public education. They never were intended to be a curriculum company for K twelve education. And so they've had a really difficult time sustaining that in the way that they know they need to. So we have to explore other options. So based on a review of the curriculum that has already been approved, and I want to emphasize that, this is curriculum that has either already been approved as part of our twenty nineteen C S E plan or part of our comprehensive health education, that was adopted two, three years ago here. So those are resources like Flash, Three Rs, Right Through Suck Responsibility, Good Heart Willpox, Projects Wellness, and My Future, My Choice. So we looked at all of those resources, a team of our health educators did at the high school level, and are going to move forward with the following. So we have two C S E lessons at the ninth grade level. What we're looking to do there is keep really the theme of those lessons and the majority of it the same. And we're going to use an adaptation from the Three Rs curriculum with some supplementation for Project School Wellness to move forward with adjusting those two lessons. The big bulk of this comes at tenth grade. That's where S A R was serving the majority of the lessons. And so we're looking at sixteen lessons here, and we're going to move forward with, My Future, My Choice has been a curriculum that we have used with our seventh graders for many years. And they have adapted a new curriculum for eighth grade. And so what we are going to do is they're going to adapt and adjust the eighth grade My Future, My Choice curriculum to work for tenth grade. We've already done a standards crosswalk with support from our state partners who support this curriculum to see what adjustments that we need to be made, but we feel really good about the alignment with the tenth grade standards as it is. And this is a curriculum that we've always received very positive feedback from utilizing in seventh grade. And so we're really excited about being able to expand the usage of that. For the eleventh and twelfth grade lessons, which also there's two lessons there that we have utilized, we currently use H S D created booster lessons that are developed off of the instruction that the students receive in tenth grade. Because this is going to be a phase up process for the next two years, we do not need to change the eleventh and twelfth grade lessons. So when I come back to you in two years for our next biannual update, I'll probably be talking to you about the updates that we need to do for the eleventh and twelfth grade lessons. But for today, we're just talking about those updates from the ninth grade and tenth grade. So for that ninth grade lesson, we've already worked with our educators on this, and the feedback we got from our reviewers and educators is that many of the topics and activities were already covered in the current lesson. We felt like it was a really good overlap and alignment. And one of the Three R lessons in particular provides a brief but meaningful examination of unhealthy abusive relationships and why they can be difficult to leave. And also the advantage is Three Rs is an open source material that is being updated, so it's also available for our family and community members to review pretty easily. The challenge is that adapting our current lessons and leaving them with the Three Rs so that they're still effective, but no longer suck. Our nine three educators liked the S A R lesson, so knowing that we can't. So, um, knowing that we can't continue to use that curriculum, how are we making sure that we're pulling away enough away from it? Um, and really making that adjustment to the three Rs. At the 10th grade level, again, this is the big chunk of it. It's a 16 lesson we're talking about here. Um, things that our reviewers liked is that, again, this is a free and open source material. Um, it's Oregon specific. This is a curriculum designed by the state of Oregon. Um, and so it is directly aligned to the standards and has, um, a really strong alignment even for 10th grade, even though we're adapting from an eighth grade curriculum. The lessons are updated very regularly on a pretty much annual basis. Um, it is grant funded. This is, um, something that the curriculum would cost us zero money. Um, and also that, that grant money also provides training for our educators and other sports available from ODE and DHS who sponsors this curriculum. Um, and our students are familiar with it. So they experienced it at seventh grade. So this would be something that they would be familiar with the structure of how these lessons work. The challenge is that we are taking an eighth grade curriculum and we're adapting it for 10th grade. So we'll need to make some minor, um, adjustments and supplementation as a result. Um, and we'll be pulling primarily from Project School Wellness and three Rs. So as always, as we go through this for reviewing CSC curriculum, so, um, uh, just a reminder that our open source materials, anything we are allowed to put online, we do put on. So, uh, so our families and community can access that at any time. Um, there's also notification letters that are sent home, um, to parents and guardians for any CSC lessons or units. And then all other lessons are of course available through those CSC kiosks. One thing I do want to note is that we are not, we have not finished the adaptation of that My Future My Choice for 10th grade lessons yet. Um, our, our, our projection is to have those fully completed by January 2026, which, um, sets us up perfectly for when we do those, um, lessons in April and May of 2026. So these will be available for review plenty of months ahead of time. But as of right now, they're not, uh, we don't have this completed yet. So in conclusion, um, going back to where we started, the purpose today was to, um, make sure that everyone felt they understand the process, um, that you'll understand the updates being made to our CSC plan of instruction and that, um, you can confirm that we've reviewed and updated the plan in compliance with that OAR. So I'm going to answer any questions.
So, um, just going back to slide eight now for CSC. Do we have any data or reference or anything like that with support that we're publishing any of these?
Um, sorry. We, our curriculum in particular, we, much of that is utilized by other, um, districts across the states. For instance, like I mentioned, My Future My Choice has been used, uh, as well as our, um, our other gray bands that we use for curriculum. Um, what we have there for resources is, um, through our community partners, the effectiveness of the curriculum like as a whole. Um, in regards to district specific ones, uh, much of that is going to be, um, kind of our anecdotal feedback that we collect. Um, some of the surveys, for instance, that we get from our seniors as they exit, as well as from our principals and from our teachers. But in regards to the effectiveness, effectiveness of the implementation of the curriculum broadly, we are totally.
Then somebody can ask something that's fine.
I know that like, because some of these are grant funded, like My Future My Choice, like that's a requirement that we have to do some post surveys and stuff like that. And so I'd have to check to see if, um, assess the results of that.
Um, sort of last time we discussed this in a very thorough way. Um, one of the complicating factors was that this curriculum, curriculum was not sort of handled the same way OD handles other curriculums. I wonder if that's the case where, like, uh, the way we described before, which OD says, these are six science curriculum trial. Which one do you like? You pick one. Like they, they had preset approved that there's really, that they were back by 19. We sort of had to piece together our, that was why we ended up with SARC. Uh, the people that are not doing it. Has ODE, uh, improved their approach to this topic? Or do we still find ourselves, and we do most of this ourselves?
I don't know that it's as much as we found it as it is a curriculum company problem as well. Like it's a, it's a combination, right? So for instance, when we do, um, and, and I don't know that this is necessarily unique to help, but like as you review curriculums, there's going to be strengths and weaknesses in regards to what standards they're moving to improve. So there they have some gaps. So I think what we found is, um, so for instance, Goodheart Willpox is the comprehensive health, um, curriculum that we utilize for all other topics except for CSC. And we even found that there were some weaknesses there. For instance, with some of the drug and alcohol education that we've had to bring in some supplementation for that. And I think what we find is when we do the alignment of what the standards require, that there's not, um, and because of those specific OARs that I went over, that a lot of those comprehensive health education companies, curriculum companies aren't fully meeting the standards, which leads up to have to piece together some different gaps. But like I said, that's not necessarily unique to help. We find that with math, we find that with science. We find that with a lot of topics that, because those companies are trying to target all 50 states, when you then zero, like zoom down to perfect standards, we have to make adjustments to.
We're not alone, our 97 other states or districts already have the same problem.
Thank you, Audrey and Becky. Our next item, the other item is the 2025 bond presentation with Beth.
Long time again. It's been so fun to celebrate all the previous bonds. Last, it is time to look forward to 2026. And even as we were, uh, getting our public ready for our 2017 bond, we told them at the time that we would be coming back to them again nine years later than, uh, 2026. Because that would be a time when we would once again have some previous bonds getting paid off. And we have kind of what we call the gap occurring naturally. Uh, once the, once the collection is made for that, um, by payment on the outstanding bonds. And it is a really, has been a really successful strategy for us to target a bond desk that simply kind of fills in that rate and allows us to keep a steady rate moving forward. Our voting public has been pretty amenable to that strategy. So, um, we are going to try that again in 2026. And so it's definitely time to start planning for that effort now. And, uh, we have kind of a new crew working on this, a, a new and mighty crew of me and Scott and Sayeda. And, um, of course I was involved on the comm side before, but, um, I will kind of be stepping up a little bit and dealing a little bit more with the oversight of the entire project this time around with colleagues. So, um, this is just, uh, I could give you a few slides so that you would have some background information. Uh, and a lot of that first paragraph I already went over. You know, we were able to last time capitalize on the gap. At the time, our gap was about a dollar twenty-five per thousand. So it generated a larger bond potential for us. If we were to go out for 480, which was passed. And because we had successfully preapplied for what's called an awesome grant, um, from the state and our bond passed, we were to get that, that grant for $8,000. We got almost $80,000 in bond sale premiums, which is fantastic. Um, and so that just added, let's say seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine million, uh, about eighty million. Uh, and then another fourteen, almost fourteen and a half million in bond interest. Uh, so all together with other smaller sources of revenue, we had 514 million that got invested into our district. Our 2017 bond was amazing. This time around, we don't have quite that much capacity. When we, uh, pay off those 2,006 bonds, we will have about 70-ish cents per thousand of capacity that gets freed up with the payoff. And, uh, Piper Sandler just ran our numbers for us recently. And at a conservative valuation, we could generate 250 to 300 million this time around. And of course, it is, it remains to be seen whether we can, once again, get that awesome grant. And, you know, what the bond market is like at the time that we do our rounds of sales of those bonds to see how much bond interest we might be able to generate, uh, or bond premium, I should say. And then of course, over the life of the bond would be the bond interest. So, um, but again, it's a nice, certainly a nice amount of money. So we would like to approach this strategically and with some assistance from folks who are expert in the field. So we have created a request for proposals and sent that out a week ago Friday. So not this past Friday, but the Friday before. And we have selected nine local firms that have been kind of, a list that had been curated by Oregon Schoolwork Association and then, um, decided it's a little bit of research. And we, we narrowed it down from there. Because we're on a bit of an expedited timeframe, I would like to have, um, a selected firm to you for you to approve at your June 17 meeting. So, uh, we've asked that those, any interested firms submit their proposals by the board, and then we'll move forward from there with streaming them and interviewing. And like I said, hopefully bringing you a candidate at the June 17 meeting who would, uh, either stay here in person or virtually to introduce themselves and maybe talk a little bit about how they plan to approach the work. And from there, uh, you know, it's just, the ball really gets rolling. So once we have our consultant selected, then we will, um, you know, of course, behind the scenes, there's a lot of work happening right now with Sayeda and her team. Cause a lot of the work is on the facility side. Like what are, what are those project needs that we have? Also from the technology side, um, you know, all, all the tech that we bought with the last bond dollars. It's kind of at a point where it's needing to be replaced. And so I know we have a lot of technology needs. And it's kind of like, I, I describe it as what's the top of the funnel? What is, what is the universe of need that we have? How much is that? And then kind of our bond development process takes those needs kind of down through a bit of a funnel. And, and we end up with some packages that we can put forth to our community to get some feedback. And ultimately, who as the board will be the ones deciding on our final problem. Um, so that just gives you a sense of kind of how things will roll out. Travis, did you want to share a little bit about kind of the work side of the bond development committee?
Yes, we, last time, uh, we did the bond process in 2017. Uh, Jerry Lilly and Deanna Palm served as co-chairs of the committee, and they provided good leadership and networking with us out into the community. And I am happy to announce that current director, Erica Lopez, will be former director Lopez at the time. And it's going to be one of the co-chairs of our bond committee, as well as former Hillsborough Mayor Steve Calliver as a regional co-chair. So I think those are two incredible people to help us steward the process. And so we'll put together a series of meetings where they'll have the gavels and we'll have a team wrap around you and we'll figure out the best bond program to get into the campaign. Thank you, Ben.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, we did really well. That's a perspective, but I thought we did fairly well in the 2017 bond. Is there a reason why we don't go back to the same company which did, you know, job?
Well, unfortunately that gentleman helped us last time, especially. Um, and that firm no longer exists. So, so it's really, we have to, we're looking at other firms that spent a lot in that kind of, um, consulting work. And, uh, when we get a little bit further down the road, we will probably still be looking for a consultant and help with the actual marketing side of things. Right now, we're just a bit for a consultant to do the, the development process. And then last time around, we worked with Jeremy Wright, and he would certainly have an opportunity to do it once again. Uh, if he's, you know, turns out to be the best candidate, we'd be happy to work with him again, but we'll, we'll put it out there. And then, um, yeah, that person would help with kind of the collateral materials, the mailers, the, and would also work with the political action committee, the staff aunt overseeing to help with the actual advocacy work, you know, door to door, uh, yard signs and things like that, so.
So, we were, sorry, we were down here talking and listening to you at the same time. I'm wondering, does the board have an active essay? But did we get to just wait with you in valuation interviewing of the firm?
Uh, well. The R and P, sorry. I suppose if, uh, somebody has time and interest, they could join us. Like I said, though, we are on a very expedited timeframe. So anybody who's interested, let me know. I can certainly share, uh, the criteria and the meeting information with you.
So, what? Sorry, we're, we're like, if we're volunteering our buddy here.
You're being volunteer there.
Well, it's nice to have a haircut. Our, our strategic.
The, uh, the replicating much of the 17 process makes a lot of sense. So is it, I guess, to be clear, the bond development committee, something that we're pretty committed to? Uh, if the firm that you love the most isn't committed to that, are we, that make them not? So I feel like having the, we're saying that we're having a bond development committee before we've chosen a person who's going to guide and lead this. I think having a bond development committee is a great idea. It's very well passed.
Right. Um, I kind of feel like that's an essential component. Like we need to have people together to give voice. So I doubt that we'd be selected if they disagree with that aspect.
Okay.
So here's a good example of what might change. So back in 2017, when we had, um, Frank Angelo and Frank Angelo group that helped guide, um, with Adam and the development process. The way they approached it was, um, creating like a series of issue papers. Right? So there were like 20 different issue papers and they, they were all topic based and they were, you know, like little chapters of a book that all kind of came together to, at the end, to then be kind of this book of issue papers. That's an example of something that may be a little bit outdated. I don't know. That'll be something that'll be interesting to hear from the firms that put in a bid, right? Maybe they approach the way that they kind of set the, set the table with the folks on the development committee with how they understand how the district is situated, all the various needs that exist. They might approach that different. So that's, I, I think that's a good example of something that was one way nine years ago, but might, there might be way better ways to do that this time around. I'm just.
It almost got filtered out before it got done. So I remember 17 issue paper, like four pillars or whatever. They'd be.
Right, that's the more holistic marketing.
It was always like distilled down into, uh, yeah, so filling out that, that word, that committee is the one doing it. Just presenting Eric and Steve with, these are all the needs we have. We can't afford them all. This is the priority. The, the people on that committee have a large say in what ends up being this opelism, what ends up just being something we couldn't afford to do.
And that, it is important for them to have background information and not just a list of projects. Like it is important for them to get educated on, on various topics. And then of course, we do have public meetings that we'll hold, you know, based on kind of your proposal AV and C. You know, maybe they'll just be handy that, and we'll get feedback and then we'll refine from there.
All goes well. And most people on the bond development may become members of our bond oversight.
Um, we can certainly have more conversation. Like I said, we hope, we plan to come back to you at the June 17 meeting with, uh, recommendation for approval and have that person settle with us about themselves and how they plan to approach the work. If you have any other questions or comments, if you don't want to join us for the, uh, review of firms, what you If you have any other questions or comments, if you don't want to join us for the uh, review of firms, what you would like to provide us with. Or just things to keep in mind, we're certainly happy to do.
Uh, I think the biggest three individual projects in the nine-year seventeen month, the three new schools. We don't anticipate a need to build a new building anymore, do we?
Not, not a, not a major maintenance property for sure. Yeah, I mean, like last time we had a good yeah, two new schools and one replacement school because it called Brooklyn replacement. Sure, we could have a replacement, but I don't see any need for an expansion.
But there might be replacement one on the list?
I mean, it's not out of the realm of. You know, you know.
Yeah, rebuild, got renovated. People thought it should be. Yeah.
It's, and, and when you're not talking about building a brand new something, that does create a bit of a challenge to really motivate the voters. So I mean, we're gonna have to be pretty thoughtful about making sure that it is a compelling ask for folks that they are looking for.
May have more of a question for Scott, I guess. Uh, the bond premium would serve us very well. Uh, funded a lot of projects that were on the wish list that didn't make the cut for the actual list. With a, a lower pending fund balance than we had the last time with the financial situation that we're in. If we expect any bond premium or are we a less attractive investment than we used?
Well, we that means the duty is also to create and see how like the, it's just a question. I still think we could do, um, this one.
Well, yeah, not the dollar number itself. Seventy-nine is not the fourth way we're going for. Hundred, maybe two eighty-one.
Probably two fifty to three hundred. We did have Piper Sandler. Six, that's funny to see. Really works to strengthen belief. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, I think we modeled it.
Oh, that's the vote. We won't go for bonds last.
So we modeled some of those narratives out. So like, to, to truly. I have to kind of look back, like Bill said. Be, be what we said previously, rearrange. There's a couple of things that I'm I don't.
It's, I think the story.
So this is what's interesting.
Does everybody understand all, like what we did last time? Like all the board members and even new board members who I see in the back? How, how we did it last time?
Because.
Yeah.
My, my question is where I had just looked into the state when you all did. No, I wasn't paying any attention whatsoever to that.
So every time you take out a bond, you pay it off over the course of a number of years and then that bond goes away. And then that year. So what we did pretty successfully in the, so a bond before the one we passed failed. Cause we asked voters for more. They said no. Uh, what we did this, the particular time was a bond was being paid off. And what we said was if you're comfortable paying the same amount as you are right now, these are the projects we can do. Not gonna ask you for more. If you, if this bond fails, your tax, your property tax will go down. Right? So people understood that what they were agreeing to do was a, it's not replacing one-to-one. It's not, it's, it, the bond that's going off is from thirty years ago or something, right? Like how, twenty years ago? Twenty? Right. So it's not the seventeen bonds paid off. It's a bond from, you know, two thousand five that's being paid off. And if people, so your property tax is, as each bond comes in, would go up, but we kept, so those property taxes would drop if we do not pass the twenty-sixth bond. What we'd like to do is have you just keep paying what you're paying right now. Not ask you for any more and that will give the district two hundred eighty million dollars to do deferred maintenance, fix roofs. H-back, all of the things that we pay for with bonds, the things, not the people. So if
The bonds are the things.
The seventeen bond passed. The one, the, and I think part of the efficacy of that message was we're not asking you for more. We're saying this is what we can do if you agree to pay about the same.
Just to add also to your contact that in Oregon, you don't get any money. But, but so we have to talk with them on our phone.
Yeah.
And a lot of don't pass law. And they're.
It's not that we don't get money for maintenance. We get general fund dollars. We can spend them on roofs.
Understand, but we.
That's fewer teachers, that's fewer larger class size. Yeah. Yeah. So the legal structure of Oregon is that if you want to do a maintenance project, you want to build a building, you want to build a turf field. You want to make something safer, you can use bonded dollars for that. Yeah.
That, that makes sense. I guess I'm wondering, um, take it a little bit further. What we just pulled off, or let me just say, with the most recent election, election. I think that it may have said some things. And I'm wondering, is that enough momentum for us? And was there momentum the last time you did this?
Yeah.
And so that's what I was trying to figure out. Do we, do we have similar momentum? Is it different? Is because ultimately we had, we had told the voters, hey, we're not gonna give a beat. And everybody's gonna be sunk. And so now it would make sense that we would come to you and say, we need. So I'm wondering, did that happen?
Best department did polling. And the polling indicated we would likely be successful with a bond, but not with.
The, I mean, a lot has certainly changed in the past years.
Lots.
We are, you know, experiencing declining enrollment right now. Back in twenty seventeen, we were projecting quite a bit of growth. It's that, that is something the schools, new schools that we need.
We did decline this year. I'm saying that.
But she's right from past. And then the other, the other thing I would say is you know, just keep in mind that while we like to promote keeping rates constant. Even if a rate is constant, your assessed value is always going to be three, three percent every year. So your taxes will go up. So that's just, I just always want to be clear with people about that. You're not gonna, like, when you see your taxes go up and people say, oh, you said they would go up. It's like, but the rate has stayed constant. It's your assessed value that keeps going up. There's nothing we can do about that. Um, the interesting thing is what we promised last time is that your rate will not go above two twenty-five.
Right.
And we met that promise. It never did go above two twenty-five. The, the issue is a little bit for us, I suppose. Now that rate is at one ninety-seven because of all the growth in our community. So um, that is going to be an essential question for us to ask ourselves as well. Do we just want to fill into what people are paying today? Or is there any wisdom in, you know, kind of somewhere in the, in the realm that between one ninety-seven per thousand we're paying now and the two twenty-five, which we promised by twenty seventeen? Those are questions we're gonna need to ask ourselves over the course of the development process and.
Yeah, I'd love to see the list of things that we're doing and what gets cut. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we, we didn't think we'd be able to afford to build turf field in country. We didn't. Right? And so a lot of things that we didn't think we were going to be able to do, we were able to.
But that's part of the story we have to tell, right?
Yeah, that, that's.
That's the story we have to tell a lot of.
Eric could be, be recruiting board members for activities like and Dylan.
Any other questions with that?
Oh, I did have a question around, uh, you think you're meeting with these like other teams? How did budget situation and like our the, you call like reserves?
A reserve, yeah. How did that, it's been a long, um.
Four triple straight moving, one is. Typically, it's not, have we sort of seen our reserves lower that they've into our assessment bracket, assessment results?
I think we were at four point five any fund balance last time we went for bond and this time we're at four. We, we took, we lowered our any fund balance and get more.
I, I wasn't very explosive. It's kind of as if you had to eat further into our current. I do know that we recently lowered the rating on a provider district. So certainly those kinds of things will answer the question. I do think that we navigated in the, in a certain sense. Especially in that space. There is also a in the state, that rating not too low, the state actually. So just sort of finger down the like jump. At the scratch or if they they come in. Issue, I don't think we're gonna go that low. There is, there could be some adjustments.
Okay, yeah.
That eight million dollar date match that we qualified for, that thing is always around or is it a one-time thing?
It's still in all two of them and they have a target. Um, they try for it in May, June, prior to the election, whenever your election is. It's worth sixty, twelve point dollars. But, um.
Are the, just out of curiosity, are the members of our budget committee, are they allowed to be on the bond on this, this?
Yes.
Let's see what's on.
Cool. I would love to see the, the, our county auditor.
I still think a board member's on. There, there was no board member on that. Bond development.
It's a couple.
Really?
Just non-formal.
I mean, Kim.
It's a dozen. We can provide information, but we have to peel off.
Oh.
To be able to do.
And we do try to give representation and quasi-equally between the meters, you know, so it's, it's not just an all come or invitation. I mean, we, we have to keep it manageable. So.
Makes sense.
Uh, I guess that's, that's enough. People didn't do this last time. The district employees cannot advocate for or against the bond. But we can on our expected to select what you just signed up for. It's probably more campaigning. Just the bond is part of the bill. Just less talking about yourselves and more about great projects. It'll be fine.
I, I think it's gonna be a surprise. Hey, how could it, given the current?
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. We, the last item for the work session is a newly added agenda item brought to us by Andrea, who will do this at Century High School in your up.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I know I've been on to all the information and just kind of wanted to what was happening and how we also fall for this next year. And so tough decisions had, had to be made. And, and for Century in this case, uh, while our enrollment is not necessarily defining how the right hand mark. Century will be going into a thousand. As well, which has So I think, um, one of the things that I just, um, wanna let everybody know, there's a difference, um, in cutting programs due to our budget versus pausing or reducing programs due to forecast. I think this is a situation where, um, program is being paused due to forecasting. Uh, and that is something where you have to have these specific classes and select. And, um, when we weren't in a shortfall, we may have been able to absorb some of the courses that were a little bit smaller, um, and keep them in our school. But as we go into a tighter and tighter year, that is going to have an impact in what we're going to be able to offer. And, um, pausing courses or, um, reducing them is not unheard of in our, in our elective program. It has had to happen before in the past where we'll combine courses. For example, uh, maybe there's fewer people that, um, want to take French four, so we'll combine French three and French four so that we can still offer the course. Or figure out other ways to offer it through the theater online. So there's different things that, that we do need to do. I wanted to let you know that Ms. Catherine has met with students, particularly the students that have worked at theater as a student and they're working on a plan to make sure they can still do their senior projects, either through senior seminar or their community courses. We've also talked about seeing if we can do some sort of partnership with our high schools, which we've done in the past too, when electives or other core courses like in the past or calculus, we could only operate one school. We've got a way to get all the other ones to work. So we're looking at options for that. She has connected with Karen, but have reached out to her and will continue to do so. And, um, is uh, is fully committed to figure out a way to continue to do an after-school program after school. And we're looking through that as next step as well. Um, but just again, wanted to let you know this is really truly not necessarily our decision to cut theater, the forecasting component that we, we do need to honor what kids select and we prioritize, obviously, highly work ethic and do our best to offer all of these. But I just wanted to, but you know, I do know we will have, we will potentially have some parents and families and students down there and, um, I appreciate their advocacy. Sharing what they believe about theater. That's wonderful. In this production and work.
Audrey, uh, two questions here. One, how many students does Century have? And two, how, what percentage of that is in?
Uh, Century next year will have, I think roughly fourteen hundred and thirty to on that. But down from this year, they have fifteen hundred. Um, and of those for the theater force, um, fifteen students selected theater two, three.
I, I needed to understand that in order to understand how to, to respond to it. And that, that's kind of the move. It's, it's painful, but it's a no brainer.
I think it really is, is agreed to. There's just, there's tough decisions that have to be made out of that. A much tighter belt. Normally you would be able to maybe figure out a way to absorb some of those things. It's much harder.
Now, I'm in Costco and somebody asked me about it. Surprised with that in Costco. Am I, am I understanding that we're, are we cutting the program? Are we cutting teachers' house? What exactly are we cutting it?
We're not operating the elective, um, at, at Century Ford in this case. So that the Catholic transferred to.
Okay, okay, go.
It's, I kind of blew up. You have to, why does it come to me? Either one of them. It's not being successful. What do I have to do at other high school art? Being there.
I would say similar things in other places. Um, I think, um, our middle schools do have some programs, it's pretty similar. They operate in your staff too. They usually always write out um, funding for that course in their, their elective collection. Um, and then, um, we've seen, um, the schools to be, they are, they are not operating theater as an elective, but there's a Um, I think, um, honestly, there are some concerns that we are seeing, um, where students maybe are less stressed in more, I think this is probably not a good situation, but more talkative elective. I think, and that's a post-candemic. Um, we see courses like opposite to debate. That's a with that. Sure, the name is sort of like. And so there's been other electives that have been slow as student interest. That the elective choices in B P P operate. Have changed that time. And it's also been some right? So, I mean, there's, there's always an ebb and flow. And I think one of the, um, challenges that all of our they all, they do recruit for their students. In the interest. For not only at the middle school level, but half the students operate in your senior, they have to continue to be one, they support you. I think it's, it's a combination. It's not just any one thing.
Yes.
Yes. I understand.
Yeah. Exactly like in Paul, the beer class, obviously, I. Here he writes, he said fifteen students forecasted. There's a petition that these people started that has. Two thousand signatures. This, I'm shocked to see that number because the amount of people. Like, I haven't just seen your. It's. Trying to understand it. Trying to understand. I'm being very, very patient, but. I guess, how are those two staff possible?
I think there's, there's forecasting and then also passionate about. And I think sometimes those are two different things, like I truly believe. Treat them, love them. But I also think there's the, do I want to take a theater class personally?
And I also say, when these people are signing it. Turned out is what's going to happen to that class and spud theater. As a whole, because those productions were being run by the same teachers that were doing classes. Um, if it'd be done to plug, for example, people are concerned that no one's going to take a job being a director. They do so. Very, very. Decision. Um, I feel like there should be more transparency. Because it feels like. A lot of people will feel that this will affect. Not just. Classes or being reduced, but. The after school program.
I think how. First, what did you find your question for? Thank you. One of the things after the fact, no, but it's not different. But, yeah. But I'll keep in. It's a kind of sad.
Yeah, that's kind of what I feel. It's definitely the verb on. Um, I think, again. People didn't want to know what's happening and here it comes. Everyone is very, very. They think that there needs some more explanation. Because it's, it's a safe space for so many people either probably happened. It's honestly the main ones people are talking about. There's other. I guess what I'm asking is. How do we protect those safe states? Well. How do we, how do we equally keep safe states? Both during and after.
I, I really appreciate when Abraham. What you're saying, and I thought it was interesting, Abraham, you said we had two thousand signatures when I thought. Okay. And does that mean fifteen hundred at the school plus another five hundred in the community? Or how did it get to two thousand? It was just a question that I had on my mind. I know you can answer that. Guess my question is to you both, what can we do? I mean, are, do you think we need to? Have some targeted communication? Do you think the board needs to come and talk to the school? What? What, what is it that you think that we can do to help you understand? The hard decision that we just had to make. Because it had to be made, but. To your point, maybe we could have had a conversation about it. Maybe we could have said something. I don't know. But I hear you. I want you to know you're heard. And then I'm, so I'm throwing it back your way. I'm not asking for. A response right now. But I'm giving you the theoretical question to go back and talk to your classmates and figure out what can we do? And help support in this very difficult time where we had to make up. Tough decisions where I know you're being impacted. So how can we help? Does that make sense?
I know people were like, you actually watched, I tried to watch the mentioned video that came out. Oh, like. That's. I like, I understand. I mean, like fifteen people, I was like. Fifteen hundred people have right now that's. Like, I don't want to sleep. But like, um, I, I feel like. I think it's just like they're fine. They're fine.
I, I think. Sorry. I'm also, um. Okay, I'll probably continue. Um, I think. I, I do have sort of an answer that I can give right now, what people. Honestly, people just feel very betrayed because they felt that budget changes. My friend said would be very minor and that was one of the common side issue that I felt earlier. People felt like it was not shown in budget video, that it was not explained that. These would impact people's lives way. Not necessarily the easiest portrayed. Really do think that there is. Lot more communication.
Thank you. Yeah. Some of the questions.
You know, a lot of the top. And I think, um. I think sometimes we would try to.
The other thing. So I think this information gives. You know, hot news or something. And let's see. Uh, this is hopefully. Considering for something. I feel in the weeds, but.
I have a. I have to respond to that. I just. Part of this is being delicate with our staff as well. So I just want to throw this out. I don't know if you guys got this email, but. The forecast for theater two are three students. The forecast for theater three are four students. Theater four is eight, to sum up, fifteen. And then for theater tech two. Four. Theater tech three, eleven. That's, so even if you combine all students who indicated interest in theater, it comes up short of us offering a single class period for it. So. What we don't want to do is post on the internet, like this, like, it is sad. It's being characterized as a sad turnout. I think we need to protect the dignity of our staff, students, and how we communicate. So I, I agree that we're trying to be transparent about the consequences of our budget shortfall. But we're also not gonna throw somebody. Out there for everybody to just say, you know, that's, that's a no painter. In terms of the decision that was made here. We need to be delicate. I just, I want to throw the data out there because I'm not sure everybody read the email. To just say that we have different. Values that we need to bring to this conversation to. Um, to protect our staff. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think one of the things that's part of it, by the time. Something else would have to give, too. There's not extra. I think that sometimes was far. And so, um, there, there is the challenge of that. I hear what you're saying, you know. If had more information and really forecasting is what we allow students to give their voice and what they want from our. Schools and whether it's, you know, banned, fired theater or if it's. Digital process, you know, there's all sorts of opportunities and I think, um. It's hard, um. To be totally transparent right before it happens because then you do get a fish. Have every right to be so about. Uh, but at some point, something was going to have to go and, and not only our elective. Every department facing a cut that, that in, in our school. And it's not because we really thought that was a dream. Be truly in a, in a situation where with twenty million dollars. Be sure. It, it, everybody is feeling it. It's not fun. I understand everything that you're saying. Um, but I'm happy to get you. Do you have other questions?
We don't. Uh. Well, respect the order. No surprise, Century is my home school, so I. On first conversations, I'm sure you had, and those numbers are a little spread. I think when we first talked, the numbers were even lower, sounded lower than fifteen or eleven protect. When we, so for, uh, I know we're in a budget shortfall situation, but offering classes that students want to take is. This may have been a decision. We, we've never had a good budget, just say it that way. That we have, we never had like, this is a great budget year. Let's do a bunch of extra stuff. So every year is kind of a challenging budget year. And this, this feels like a decision that may have had to be made. Even in a, without a twenty, twenty million dollar home, it's everything. Um, and, uh. The, 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 one of the things that stood out when, when we had our conversation about this. Was sixty-five or so percent of students who try out for the play. Are not taking theater class. So there's, there is a lot of support for the arts and for theater program. But they, I think we, this is a, this is something I'm saying, since my kids were band kids for their entire high school career, they really didn't have opportunity to take. Many other electives because of the way it's scheduled structured. If you want to take one elective, you're kind of in that one and it makes it very difficult for our students to try a wide range of things. So we, what we end up with is a lot of students. Who want to participate in a play, who want to be in a play, probably want to do tech for a play, but. Can't choose that as their elective because of the way the scheduling is working out. So I had. Just to one hundred percent verified, Century is currently committed to doing a play this year and students will have opportunity to be in play. It, it, it's not done deal. They have, they have to find, if that teacher's not going to be there, if you can't rely on those classes to provide extra support for the play, I think it's going to be harder. But the plan is still to have a theater opportunity for students.
And again, we're seeing that happen in other high schools.
Right. Yes, we're the, yes, we're the.
Where they don't have a theater.
No theater class, but they have a very robust. Play and theater program at the school. Um. Again, so a little farther afield, um. But I think of former board members who have kids in that. Job. Uh. I, I don't know the kinds of class. Size numbers we expect for the construction program, Glencoe or whatever, but in some ways. Uh, are we making a mistake not thinking of this as a C T E program?
I think, um, I guess what I would say in any of our C T programs that had numbers forecasted. Intuition, we would be having a conversation about. I think I, we would want to be fair that that's not, and that's just like some of our other courses where we see the numbers drop off. Buying forces and, and any. Any program. That, that had lower numbers, we would have that conversation to determine what would be the best course of action.
Because even if we combined all of the students who want to take a theater class. We would have to not. We had, we don't have the staff to have enough, some other class, some, some other class. So whatever time that means, if that's, if that. If a theater teacher stayed there and tried to do the thirty or so people that want to be in theater. Across the whole, like, you'd be teaching theater one, two, three, four, hall. You know, whoever said theater one would be trying to learn theater four concept. I can't even imagine how hard that would be. But if we tried to do that. Would we likely end up with French four or French, what, what, some other class? Probably wouldn't love, we'd, we'd have to take that class.
Well, that helps when we talk about a budget.
Yeah, budget, right, yeah.
It's have to be.
But that does help contextual to understand that. That same conversation would happen with a C T E class.
It would happen with.
Makes sense.
What I was talking about, like AP chemistry did not so, did not fit all. Do we pass over? And we can both not forecast.
I, I do love the out of box thing that you mentioned, sorry, that's something that maybe has come up since our conversation. The idea of. Is it not the Travis shuttle? What is, what is, what is it supposed to be? Is it, for years, it was like the Travis. It's like, it's got like a special shirt and everything. Giving kids, giving suits an opportunity to shell to another. Like, we let them do that for fire science. We let them do that for a lot of things, so. I, I haven't heard of that as a possible option, but I.
Guaranteed option.
Sure, not yet. But at, but at least we're. Working towards. Something that the votes are just saying it's not true.
So usually, but, um, in a situation, what I know, I would call the. So these forecasted for AP Chem and. If you're looking at possible options. And from your body language, maybe not Glencoe, that's okay. And, um, then we would. Just to figure out what. And to be transparent, too. Sometimes we can and sometimes we can't. That, and that is an alignment of schedules and it's really a big jigsaw puzzle. You know, if you try to do it back.
I think, I think the people who are in, in the community would really, really want. Reassured that if it gets forecasted for, yeah, if they come back. They want to be reassured that. Probably, yeah, we'll make sure that even though the classes are. That theater is still, they want to be assured that it is a safe space. That's what I, they just want to be assured. And I, I think it's one of the things that hasn't been. And I, I think it's one of the things that hasn't been communicated for, um, it's a very new thing, it's not, it began, there's coverage on it anywhere other than the decision.
We'll connect with, um. At first starting to see that.
And, and also I want you to know that it would be inappropriate for us to stand in front of Casper before she makes, before she can do her swish and flick and create the magic, because that's what she's going to do, because she's that kind of teacher. She's going to do swish and flick and then she's going to say, okay, I think we can do A, B, and C, even though it isn't what we want, I think we can do this. Until she says that, Audrey can't make a move, we can't make a move. So we don't want to get in front of her, we want to make sure that we're supporting her so that then she can try to make it better for your two thousand people, who signed your petition. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, but I feel that so many have brought this and felt this score the work that they accept, given that we can't control the situation, to comfort people and act in that.
Appreciate it.
Everyone understands that's a very hard thing to do. So it's that's that people through selective and stuff situations, I think. That's something that. Like the petition literally adds, um, Patrick Fireman, eight, four, and T. F. listed as the decision. That's what people think, even if it's not true, that's what people think. So that's the reason why I'm like tweeting transparent, I have to email the campaign person, be like, after, off the rabbits. So it's, it's just.
And I would say, I think, first, he was just. She is open, actually, that is, we just.
Also wanted, I wanted to offer today because I agree with what you have to say. At least there's an expectation to us to speak to it. So then Audrey helped me with some talking points that I can offer. Right? The last time, well, first, we tried not to give, do a back and forth public comment. I respect that. So if you were to say, don't do this, um, I got you. However, if the public comment time plays out, we have multiple comments on a single topic, I do have talking points just to say, hey, because we hear you, because I understand what the situation is from my angle, here's that we value the art, so that here are the opportunities for students to meet with the principal of their school or pursue their career pathway. I have information to share, so I'm happy to do that in a, it's pre-planned so that we don't look like we're just staring when they come to us. So normally I would love to bet in that instance to nudge me and say, go ahead, sounds good. As we can also say, like, do, don't expect a response, we could have staff follow up. It'd just be, it'd be up to us, I think, to, if that's a good idea that sits well with you all, to, I, you can. I think you can.
I think, yes, yes. Um, I think that. You know, they, you know, we're waiting to see. I think it'd be very good, look to my fellow colleagues, people, thank you.
I think that was, that, that was my point, because some can be.
Thank you.
I, I'm gonna say this, don't be surprised, but I just want to make sure we're first to clear, we do this. Um, I think we should say something publicly, I'm just not sure this meeting, this upcoming meeting downstairs, meeting where we should do it, be why? Because how many conversations have we had downstairs that did not do? People wanted an answer?
It's not uncommon. Maybe it's, it's out of the ordinary, but it's not.
We don't, we're comfortable.
I personally, it worked, I felt like it worked okay last time we did it, uh, Irish social network activity on the internet that's getting some play in the news media. And then for the other times we've said we are, so we just stay with that status quo versus the, our no, normal MO is just did not fly, but I guess when we decided it's useful and. Let's do it. What's worth it, if people watch and answer it?
There are people down there right now and a bunch of people assigned outside. We could end this.
Any other questions?
It's gone anywhere.
Okay. Uh, thank you, and we will now reset this work session at six fifty-five and begin the regular session downstairs in the.
District One J Board of Directors' regular session is now in order. We will begin like we always do with a flag salute, and the flag is right behind us, or behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I will be reading the Hillsborough School District land acknowledgement. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district serviced area is on the occupied traditional homeland of the Atqualati Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tuatli, Kalapula, Kalame, Plaquemines, Tamwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. We now will move into the proclamations. Our only proclamation is the LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation read by Vice Chair Mark Watson.
The Hillsborough School District recognizes that the struggle for dignity and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, two-spirit, intersex, and asexual LGBTQ plus people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge it in a more inclusive society. The Hillsborough School District understands that LGBTQ plus individuals, including those who live in our local community, face discrimination simply for being who they are and who they love, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every person. The Hillsborough School District commemorates the tenth anniversary of the landmark Supreme Court decision of twenty fifteen, guaranteeing marriage equality to all fifty states as a historic victory for the LGBTQ Americans, and continues to affirm our belief that we are all freer when we are treated as equals. The Hillsborough School District celebrates that the month of June is recognized time to celebrate contributions of the LGBTQ community to our society and our collective history. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty-five to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of the LGBT community to the development and prosperity of our society.
Thank you, Director Watson. Our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second. It has been moved by Director Ward, seconded by Director Lopez, to approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Oh, motion carried. Our next agenda item is audience time. Rose Beth, do we have?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. I will now be reading our audience participation statement. As representatives of the community, members of the Board of Directors believe that listening to public input is essential to making wise decisions. So we thank you for taking the time to be here. We consider this time, this your time to speak and our time to listen. So individual board members will not reply directly to you immediately following your comment. If a board member hears something that requires additional attention, they may request it to be added to a future meeting agenda, or the superintendent or his designee may reach out directly to net, to connect with you. We are fortunate in the Hillsborough School District to have a collaborative community that can discuss points of disagreement in a respectful manner. With this in mind, rudeness, ridicule, obscene, or profound language, impatience, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes are prohibited. Audience demonstrates supporting or opposing a speaker or idea are not permitted. We welcome frank discussion of district operations and program, but in public sessions, the board does not hear comments regarding any individual, individual district staff member. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH public comment of board meetings. There are structured channels for the board to review complaints involving staff members described in board policy KL, public complaint. As you start your remarks, please share your name, and if speaking for an organization, the name of your organization. We allow up to three minutes for each public comment. Please feel free to follow up by email to the board or the superintendent.
First up is Cassandra Savay.
Superintendent Ryman, members of the board. My name is Cassandra Savay. I am Century High School's theater teacher, and I speak on behalf of Century Theater Arts Career Pathway courses. I want to acknowledge the difficult financial position this district is facing. I'd also like to respect that you are aware of the vital importance of art in education, so for the sake of time, I will focus my statements on how a lack of communication resulted in missed opportunities, a breakdown in collaboration, and misunderstandings that resulted in ineffective solutions and strained relationships. When school and district leadership became aware that Century Theater would not have sufficient enrollment to continue course offerings, they should have taken proactive steps to support the program. In district-led professional development, educators are taught to actively support student success. When a student is struggling, we are expected not just to observe, but to intervene, support, scaffold, and empower them to achieve. If educators are held to the standard of doing everything possible to help our students and building and district leadership should uphold the same standard of care with regard to its staff and program. Century Theater did not receive that support. Over the past year, we made strong efforts to promote theater courses but faced several obstacles. We organized matinees, student-led workshops, interactive events, and participated in incoming freshman night. I requested that our performing arts assembly take place before course forecasting to boost enrollment, but forecasting was moved earlier, making that impossible. The decision to move forecasting earlier also meant our theater middle school would not see our musical before they forecast, reducing further our exposure to our program. Enrollment data was available in March, yet neither I nor students were informed theater opportunities were at risk. Rather than seeking solutions, the district chose to quietly cut the program without transparency or collaboration. At no point was I or anyone else with understanding of the program's significance consulted. Was the drama teacher at Brown open to moving to South Meadows? Would halftime at Century and halftime at Brown work? As a qualified candidate, was I considered for the Liberty position? Could Liberty students have been bused to Century next year to help boost Century's numbers? Could I manage halftime at Liberty and halftime at Century? None of these solutions were discussed. When the district announced the cuts, they were vastly unprepared to communicate with those affected. I was notified of my transfer on Friday, May sixteenth. On Monday, May nineteenth, I requested support from administration and communicating the cuts to students and families. I urged leadership to speak directly with those affected in a timely manner and to provide clear rationale to prevent confusion and anxiety. I was left to deliver the news alone, without answers to the many questions students and families had. When I finally received a reply on May twenty-second, community outrage had already escalated into organized action. The district's delayed and defensive responses made it clear, preserving the district's narrative mattered more than acknowledging the harm caused or providing equitable solutions for how students would move forward in their career pathway. When the district asked me to support a grieving community at South Meadows while, Meadows while simultaneously attempting to revive a program at Century, it was evident they did not realize how impractical that offer truly is. South Meadows does not feed into Century, meaning the work I do there will not contribute to the recovery of the program. South Meadows deserves a teacher who can fully commit to healing their hearts after a significant loss. Just as Century deserves a teacher who can fully commit to bringing back course offerings. Running Century's program relies on an average of nine hundred hours annually outside of my contract's time at a stipend rate that isn't half of minimum wage. Furthermore, a theater space left unattended quickly descends into disorder, not only through practical hazards like technical failures, safety risks, unauthorized leading, access leading to theft and vandalism and mis, sorry, and mismanaged audiences, but also the erosion of institutional knowledge and artistic integrity that maintaining a program demands. To faithfully serve both schools is an impossible task that sets me up for failure and serves me up as a scapegoat, scapegoat for blame when neither program succeeds. If the Hillsborough School District truly values its students and their arts education, it must go beyond words and take real action to preserve Century Theater and other arts programs. I am requesting that district leaders make time to meet with me and other theater educators, as well as appropriate administrators, to reconsider their decisions and develop a meaningful path forward for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The trust of students, families, and staff has been shattered, and restoring it will require greater integrity moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Lee Chen. Lee Chen, is Lee here? Okay, we'll, we'll move to the next, Lori Deliposen.
And if we can ask the audience, um, part of our agreements is that there is no responding to the, um, to the person speaking, so if you could keep your applause, um, to none, please, thank you.
Hello, I'm Lori Deliposen. I'm the theater and film teacher at Glencoe High School. I'm also a former Century parent, and I'm here today to talk about Century's decision to cut theater classes for next year and maybe forever. I could speak to how much students learn and grow in theater when they perform scenes, design, build sets, write original plays, lead crews, or to the truth that theater develops empathy, social skills, creativity, better than literally anything else we do in this district. I could speak to the total lack of equity between our buildings and their performance opportunities K through eight in this district. But I'm here because I am genuinely concerned about the health and well-being of Century's students who rely on theater and its community. Just a couple of facts first. Interestingly, we had our statement about the LGBTQ plus community at the beginning because theater serves a unique and highly at-risk community. Many students are a part of the LGBTQ plus community and even more actually neurodivergent. Theater allows them to be themselves in a way that no other environment does. Right now, in this moment, when this community feels most threatened, is frankly a terrible time to make this change. Theater saves lives. No, that's not some sort of dramatic overstatement, that's a fact. Theater saves lives by caring about and giving voice to students who don't feel safe or heard anywhere else. Is the board and district willing to further put at risk these already at-risk students? Niche programs exist throughout the district too that cost far more and serve far fewer students. A move like this speaks to what these students already feel, which is a disregard for the importance of their art and its existence in HSD, a disregard for them. Finally, a question to the board as an advocate for Century's theater program. What opportunities will these students be given to continue their theater education? Will they be transported, just like aviation, fire science, construction, to another school? Or are they just going to be left without a pathway for graduation, without a community, and without the one thing that makes them want to come to school each day? Cutting theater at Century is dangerous and a bad mistake, and I urge you to rescind that decision. Thank you.
Next up is Megan Kish.
Hello, I am Megan Kish. I am a former student at Century High School. I graduated in the year 2022, and I am here to advocate for students who may find a safe space at Century Theater like I once did. I am a lesbian, fat, non-binary student, or I was and I still am. And following this decision, when I became aware of it, I could not help but think of a freshman at high school coming to conclusions about themselves that made them feel isolated and scared and in need of community. And thinking of that student who might not have the pathway to Century Theater that I once did, it broke my heart. And I could sit in here for hours, probably days, about how much this program meant to me and still means to me going on in my college life now. But I'm sure you all already know that. Please reconsider this decision that you are making, especially in this climate that we are in now where everyday students like me, people like me, are afraid of how one social environment like this that feels like a safe space, that allowed me to meet and trust people that I had no other ability to meet other than this program, that I still talk to every day. And we have formed this community because of this theater department and how much effort and work that Ms. Savay has put into it, along with any other theater department in this district that might be struggling right now also. I understand times are hard for a school district. I have complete understanding for that, but I think there are ways to go about it in a way that will support people who are most at risk right now than what might be happening. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Megan.
Next up are Elijah and Jocelyn.
I'm Elijah Lot. I am the incoming ASB president at Hillsborough High School.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Torres, and I am the incoming VP President in Hillsborough High School.
And we are here to oppose the transfer of Social Studies and Assistant Activities Director, Mr. Spencer, or Dakota Spencer. So the first, the reason we oppose this is the first thing we'd like to, sorry, the first thing, reason I'd like to bring to you guys' attention is that he has committed countless hours to our activities program, our leadership program. We host a bunch of after-school setups for, of course, dances and assemblies and things of those sorts. He's at every single one. And these things last for hours and hours, and to have an adult there is required, but he's always there to offer support and host all these things. And without him, we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the stuff we do at Hill High. And yeah.
And both of us know and understand the situation of this district and our budget and why it's happening. Dakota Spencer specifically is irreplaceable to our leadership program. So currently, we are very active in this leadership program. We're losing around 20 spots in student government. We are losing around 30 kids in each leadership classroom that we have each period. There are students who are not going to be able to enjoy and have this fundamental experience of leadership and have this opportunity because of the transfer of Mr. Spencer. And not only this, he is really, really amazing, and he's vital to our climate, like our LGBTQ community.
That's actually what I was going to follow up on. You all here talked about how the importance of LGBTQ+ communities and members. Having a strong representative like Mr. Spencer, who's an openly gay man, he is a strong LGBTQ+ role model, and to have somebody like that at our school is super vital to our climate, especially towards our LGBTQ kids. And like I said, having him there is, it's unquantifiable. He is extremely important to our LGBTQ community, and he's an unmatched representative of it and champion of it.
And we understand any transfer of any kind of teacher is devastating to their school. At this time, it's, every school has their issues and sadness going on. We, specifically with Dakota Spencer, we have started several petitions, letters being sent to the principal admin and to the district board. These students care deeply about Dakota Spencer, and he is deeply needed in our environment. And to simply also add, he is not being transferred into South Meadows where he is able to still support Hillsborough High School. So again, we really, really hope you can reconsider the transfer of Dakota Spencer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madeline Hanson.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Hanson, and I am a junior at Century High School, and I'll be talking about how Century Theater has impacted me and my development. As you may know, our theater program is facing complete elimination due to budget cuts. This means the discontinuation of theater classes, technical theater courses, and our after-school program. This situation is particularly concerning to students enrolled in this theater career in college pathway, including myself, as they will no longer have a capstone class complicating our graduation process. My experience in the theater program has been overwhelmingly positive. Theater promotes a community that welcomes everyone. I've spoken to many individuals who initially hesitated to join theater due to their other commitments such as sports, but those who ultimately took the leap and joined theater described it as the best decision of their high school careers. Eliminating this program would not only affect current participants, but also deprives future students of the chance to discover their passion in theater. Moreover, theater classes offer much more than just acting skills. Technical theater in particular encompasses a wide variety of disciplines, including playwriting, directing, stage management, lighting design, sound design, set design, carpentry, cosmetology, and costume design, among others. The skills learned in those areas translate directly into the real-world job opportunities, giving students a head start in various fields beyond acting, such as trade. Personally, I have gained more practical job experience in a single technical theater class than any of my core classes. We need to preserve these opportunities for ourselves, to prepare ourselves for heights after high school, and equip ourselves to the success in the workforce. Century Theater has become my second home, a sanctuary where I find joy, inspiration, and a sense of belonging. The news that my theater was set to be cut was truly heartbreaking, and to hear this decision was made in almost secrecy was worse to me. This program has not only provided countless opportunities of artistic expression, but has also fostered a vibrant community that I hold dear to my heart. I long for the days where I can immerse myself into performance, into performances, workshops, and gatherings that celebrated our collective creativity. I want to reclaim that sense of home and those memories attached to it. If theater was a part of my life, I would not be here today. Thank you for considering the impact of this decision on both of you.
Thank you.
Sean O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Brien and I'm a parent of two students at Century High School. And I want to tell you all a little bit about my son, who has autism. He has difficulty with processing, he has a lot of difficulty. What's easy for many people is difficult for my son. During his freshman and sophomore years at Century, my son was a virtual ghost. He had no friends, he spoke to no one, he was miserable. And it was a chore, an incredibly difficult chore, to get him to go to school at all. And many is the day that he did not go. He could not face it. And that all changed at the beginning of this year, when he signed up for a theater class at Century. In theater classes, they do theater games, and theater games can be silly. And my son's biggest trigger is being embarrassed, which is why he won't talk to anyone. But he saw other students being vulnerable, and he saw other students making silly animal noises and pretending to be animals. And another kind-hearted student said to him, "Join us," and he did. And everything changed in that moment. I am happy to report to you that my son now has friends at Century. He talks to people. He's been involved in two theater productions at Century. And his story is not unique. There are many students who feel isolated, who feel that they haven't found their people. Well, my son was lucky enough to find his people, and it changed his life. And I've heard other people say this, but I want to tell you right now that he talked about killing himself all the time in the first two years of high school. And he hasn't said anything like that since he has been a part of this program. I don't know a lot about district politics or how these budget decisions are made, but I know equity gets a bad rap these days, but there seems to be something inequitable going on, at least at Century High School. My daughter is a freshman. She's in the marching band at Century. It's a great program. She loves it, and I love it. It's great. As a parent, I contribute on top of the school's activity fees about 700 bucks a year so that my toddler can be in marching band. The only thing I've ever contributed to Century Theater is my time trying, helping to build sets and do things of that nature. I'm assuming that that's my three minute. I am begging you to not destroy my son's senior year, to help him continue and other students like him continue to make progress and grow as human beings. And theater does that. Please try to talk about some alternative funding streams. Find a way to keep this important program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Menigan.
Hello, board members. I understand the immense pressure of budget decisions. I'm here to agree, not because you've had to make these decisions, but because of the way that it was executed. And tonight, I implore you to see beyond the numbers and recognize the profound and unquantifiable loss that we face by dismantling Century Theater. Theater is a fundamental pillar of holistic education, and for many students, it's their lifeline. It was certainly my lifeline, it's my child's lifeline. Theater cultivates skills essential for every future path. It fosters unparalleled communication abilities, public speaking, active listening, articulation, vital in any career. It demands collaboration, teaching students to trust, innovate, and work as a cohesive team to bring a shared vision to life. It instills rigorous discipline and problem-solving from mastering lines to overcoming technical challenges on a deadline. But most critically, theater provides a unique sanctuary for students who don't thrive in traditional avenues. This is our LGBTQ community, this is our neurodivergent community, these are the quiet students who find their voice on stage and they build unshakable confidence. Consider the students who struggle academically but excel at set design or costume creation, discovering the intrinsic value, their own intrinsic value and their unique talents. These are the artists, the innovators, and the empathetic leaders who might not find their place in more traditional spaces such as band or athletics. Theater builds empathy as students step into diverse characters, fostering a deeper understanding of the human condition. It's a powerful outlet for creativity and mental well-being, offering a safe space for expression, emotional exploration, and a vital sense of belonging for students who often feel unseen or unheard. For many, the theater department is their second family, a place where they are celebrated for their authentic selves. Dismantling this program isn't just cutting a budget line, it's cutting off a critical avenue for student development, especially those who need it most. We're removing a safe haven, stifling creativity and denying countless young people the chance to discover their passion, build essential life skills, and find their community. I urge you to reconsider and come up with some creative pathways, speak to Savay, speak to other administrators and people who are invested in this program, and find another pathway. I personally, I just, I cannot say this enough, it is so important, and these kids' lives matter, and they deserve the opportunity to pursue their CTE and everything in life.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rain Menigan.
Hello, I am a senior at Century High School. My name is Rain Menigan, and I am representing the Century Theater Department. Obviously, as you've heard from everyone else, this cut is a major decision. This cut wasn't communicated to us in a reasonable way whatsoever. We had to sit in the auditorium and have Ms. Savay tell all of us, while all of us asked questions about what senior year is going to look like for people graduating next year, what the pathway is going to look like going forward, if there's any solutions. There were answers to none of that. And we don't know how the department is going to go forward next year, which can hurt so many senior projects, graduation requirements, everything. We have no clue how any of this is supposed to go on next year. And then for the mental health of our students, as a part of Century Theater Company, I can speak for so many people that have said to me personally, they would not be alive if it weren't for the department. Theater has saved so many of our lives, and has genuinely been the pure reason of some of our existences. Hunting this will destroy mental health, it will destroy an outlet, it will destroy a way to just be ourselves, to be unique. It is, like everyone has said, it is a safe haven for neurodivergent people, it is a safe haven for people of the LGBTQ+ community, it is a safe haven for anyone who is too afraid to be themselves out in public. But in theater, we can do all of those things. It has genuinely taught me more than any other core class I have ever taken. And if it weren't for theater myself, I would have no idea what I'd be doing after high school. I'd have no idea about really anything. Theater has taught me more than anything else has really ever has, and hunting the department will hurt so, so many students, which should, which students' mental health should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whitney Beebe.
Good evening, my name is Whitney Beebe. I am currently a parent at Century High School as well as Brown Middle School, which is a theater into that high school. I'm also a thespian of the International Thespian Society. However, I received my degree in the biological sciences and genetics, which means I'm pretty good at math, so I want to talk to you about some math tonight. I spend a good chunk of my day looking at the budget that's published on the HSD website. According to page 99, historically, the October 1st enrollment marks the highest student count of the year. Projections are used for staffing and determining discretionary budgets for schools. The district has experienced declining enrollment over the last five years and continues to expect that to be the same based on anticipated declining birth rates and a trend downward. So why in part of our budget are we spending money to create two new elementary schools? Why are we replacing a third elementary school? You list personnel resource allocation on page 100. In 2024 to 2025, you have 1,105 certified staff members. The proposed budget for this year is 1,152. That's an addition of 47 people. That's an addition of 47 people. Why is Ms. Sivay being asked to leave? We also show an expected building of three new turf fields at three separate high schools as well as a track. I also noticed a distinct lack of itemization when it comes to things like extracurricular activities. This just speaks more about the subjugation of this particular decision, which is disgusting to me. It's 2025. There have been numbers of studies that have shown how the arts benefit academia, and we're still fighting over arts versus sports. On your website, there is a very nicely-produced film talking about the budget reductions and the fact that there is a $20 million decrease. I understand that. In the text of that video, it says, "What you will not see are wholesale reductions to music, athletics, career and technical programming, and other offerings that engage students in their education." Boy, does that ring false. We're also seeing statements of support of Indigenous people and the queer community, of which I am also a member. We have all sorts of uplifting posters and empowering words painted all over our schools. But if you don't put your money where your mouth is, they mean nothing. According to the Human Rights Foundation, only 22% of the queer community and less than 20% of the trans and gender expansive community play sports, compared to 50% of all high school-aged youth in the United States. Do you know where those queer youth find a home? They find classic literature, human experience, relationships, conflict resolution, empathy, communication, imagination, culture, history, cooperation, analysis of characters. All of these things are fundamental to theater, and you're taking this away from one of the most vulnerable populations in this district. If you're not willing to put your money where your mouth is, stop saying those statements. They don't mean anything.
Thank you.
Brent Beebe?
I'm Brent Beebe. As you might guess, our unusual last name, Whitney's my daughter. Mine won't be nearly as forthright as hers is. So a question I always wonder about when I hear about names like this going to Century is, why do we always?
Sir, can you move your time and mind to the article?
How about that? How about that?
How about this?
Okay. So we always tend to treat the arts as a luxury educational experience, when in fact, you know, I need to ask the board a question. Don't you, you have goals set by the state and by the federal government to increase student scores, right? We hear about those often. Sometimes they're controversial, but I know you have goals, and of course, you want to do that. That's why you're here. So numerous studies indicate that the arts improve score results. So we've heard lots of things about how this benefits the students, but let's talk about how it's going to benefit you as a board and your goals that you have as a board. I've got, I printed out ten copies. I didn't realize how many people were on the board here. I'll just hand this off to you guys and let you do it. But I would like to say just in closing that if anything, other programs should contribute budget shares to the arts because it makes their job easier. Yes? Okay, thank you.
Jessica Modern?
Good evening, Superintendent Raymond, Hillsborough School Board and community members. My name is Jessica Modern, and I'm a parent at Century High School. I can read really fast, okay? On May 16th, we learned that the district cut the theater program at Century High School, citing a lack of student interest. Since then, the students have organized a petition that just tonight before this meeting had 2,014 signatures on it. I think there's interest. Removing theater from Century doesn't just shuffle our teacher. It effectively ends our after-school theater program that has served over 100 students this year. This includes some of our most vulnerable students in our district, students with disabilities, students with autism, and LGBTQ+ students who found safety, friendship, and purpose in theater. Theater is unique in that it removes almost every barrier to participation. There's no fee to join, and there is a role for everyone onstage or behind the scenes. Students build sets, design costumes, run sound and lighting, handle publicity, do makeup and hair, and even greet guests as ushers. It also teaches real-world skills. Students learn teamwork, time management, and responsibility. They build sets with power tools. They meet deadlines because opening night will not wait. They collaborate with other school departments like culinary arts to plan themed concessions, with graphic design to make show posters and shirts, foreign language for pronunciation, and with the band to form the pit orchestra. These collaborations happen during school hours. Cutting theater at Century is not just the loss of an extracurricular. It is the loss of a vital, inclusive, and skill-building community. I urge you to reconsider this decision and find a way to protect the arts across our districts. Our students need these opportunities to grow, not just academically, but as confident, creative, and connected young people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Cooper?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Pobergran. My mom signed me up for this because I was a little late. Apologies. I am a junior and a member of Century High School's Technical Theater Program. I have worked in both technical and the dramatical aspects of theater, and one thing I have noticed is that Century Theater has a very fragile cultural ecosystem that is grounded in generational knowledge. And removing theater for even only a year will damage it. Maybe not permanently, but recovery will be immensely difficult and knowledge will be lost. We are a small but distinct community, which fluctuates but stays strong throughout generations. If theater is cut, so is the community that the knowledge, its knowledge and its traditions. I just found this community, and everybody who has found it and will find it, and everybody who has found it, will be devastated for its loss, and everyone who will find it will feel a major gap because there is something missing in our community. That is all. Thank you.
I want to thank the Hillsborough School Board for granting us the time to speak and demonstrating how democracy, democratic society is supposed to be operating. I come today for two points, recognizing that the budget shortfall and its impact. The first I have, though, is my student is a junior, she'll be a senior next year. She forecasted for theater programs and for art programs that are going to be cut. Is she going to have the opportunity to reforecast? She has spent numerous years where she has ended up having a full year of student aid because they have not had programs available for take for the last two years. And then fortunately, the teacher that she is a student aid for is being transferred to a different school. So not only is her theater program being eliminated, which is one of her major resources, but her student aid teacher, who is also one of her major support systems, is being taken away. So I'd really like to know if the students are going, who have signed up for this and need it for their career pathways, are going to be given an opportunity to reforecast for something that, so that they can make their accomplishments for their senior year. The second thing that I'd like to say regarding the Century Theater Program, as a former theater kid myself at Hill High, I have been extremely impressed with the way that this program operates with students. The students do the sets, the design. The students design the costuming. The students do the makeup. The students present and take the tickets at the beginning of the thing. They do the art. When I was in school at Hill High 30-some years ago, we were granted the opportunity to be onstage and maybe the opportunity to move set pieces, but we did not, we were not fully engaged in the theater. And that is very different from what my child experiences here. She has told me days where they have gotten to reclaim hinges from one set piece, dig screws out of a box to find screws that will match it, and not buy new equipment, but putting screws together to make those set pieces work and function. I don't know if any of you were able to go see the Alice in Wonderland show that they just did. They did that entire production in five weeks, including complicated set pieces of three different pieces that moved onstage, had doors opening, really inspirational in the way they decided to do the costuming, completely uniquely bringing it together. This program, these people, and these kids are really thriving in it, and I want to think, I just want us to think about what we're going to be doing, because I don't know how they would do this if they weren't given those 90 minutes twice a week to build that community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Steve Sivay.
Hi there. I'm Steve Sivay, same last name as the teacher over here, who's my daughter-in-law. My wife and I raised two boys at Century High School. In fact, about 25 years ago, that's where they, we were first introduced to the theater program. And there's a lot of kids that get to high school, and all of this has been said, but we've got some experience watching this program for 25 years now. There's a lot of kids that get to high school, and they don't know what to do. They don't know where to go. They don't know who their friends are going to be. And the theater is a place that some of them wind up, and as many people have said here, is the right place for them. It's welcoming. My son's made, made back then, 15 years old, lifetime friendships from that theater program. They're just, it's the type of thing that will work well, well beyond high school. We, like I say, we've been involved for 25 years. We were involved with them way back when, building the sets, doing all those wonderful things, and since then, going to the shows, and now helping them as well as best we can. A lot of the kids that don't have the sports and all, that's where they, that's where they wind up. Earlier, a lot of people have said that if you don't have the theater program like this, you're going to lose kids. They're going to lose kids out of high school. You also can possibly lose kids in other ways. It just is a decision that needs to be rethought. You've got to have ways, you've got to have a way in the system that you can rethink that decision. That is just something that affects so many kids now and years to come, not just this year, but for years to come. Like somebody said, even if you build the program for one year, that will effectively kill a program, and it will take so long to rebuild. Even if it came back next year, it takes so long to rebuild again and get started again. So please, get your pencils out. Find something to do. Don't kill a program like this.
Thank you. Now, we have some words by Superintendent Raymond.
Thank you. I asked to talk tonight because I know something about what's going on at Century High School, and I heard that you all were coming, and I just want to thank you for your courage and your advocacy. It sounds like you're all aware of the budget situation that we're in, and that there are hard decisions being made in our district and in school districts across the state. So I feel your passion, and I feel your love for this program. I'd like to start with an apology because it sounds like there's been a lack of communication with students who are impacted by the change. And as a school district, we really value communication. I'll commit to doing better, so I apologize for that. I also heard that Principal Casper has been meeting individually with students who are directly impacted by this situation, and I want to commend her for doing so. We highly value the arts in Hillsborough, and we recognize their role in developing creativity and collaboration and expression among our students. Our high school music and arts programs have long been a point of pride in our district, and that commitment remains, even though we face tough financial realities. This year's budget reductions are not about the importance of any one program, but a response to significant fiscal constraints that require us to operate more efficiently district-wide. We are continuing to offer band, choir, and other electives, but we are adjusting the number of sections based on the actual student course requests to ensure that we're using our resources responsibly and also honoring student choice and voice. We have attempted to avoid eliminating programs completely across the district. What is changing about how we match staffing and course offerings to enrollment is a practice many districts use during difficult times. In some schools specifically, may see programs paused for the forecasted, if the forecasted enrollment is not in line with the needed class size. And this is what's happening at Century High School. We are pausing the courses that are offered during the school day in the theater program due to low forecasting. We've made reductions across the board, not just in fine arts. These are changes that are painful but necessary to maintain overall stability and preserve core academic and student support services. We are offering fewer sections in classes like social studies and science as well, not just in the arts, which means higher class sizes and the elimination of some sections. We will continue to celebrate and support our fine arts students and educators, and we will work to strengthen enrollment in these classes so that they can grow again in the future. And what I want you to know about the current situation at Century High School is that our theater students are not being forgotten. At Century High School, we still plan to offer theater production after school, and it sounds like that program will be well-supported. It's my understanding that currently at Century High School, the juniors and seniors who are pursuing a career pathway through the theater program still have a combination of humanities and senior seminar and theater productions after school where they can pursue and continue their career pathway. So I would encourage you, if you haven't had that conversation with Principal Casper, to do so because she's coming up with creative solutions where you can continue on your career pathway. Thank you for allowing me to make a couple of comments, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Raymond. Our next agenda item is to approve the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I second.
It has been moved by Director Watson and seconded by Director Thomas to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Motion carries. Our next agenda item is the Hillsborough Schools Foundation Annual Report with Erin Carlson and the HSF Board.
Good evening. I'm here tonight with a number of representatives from the Hillsborough Schools Foundation. I'm Kim Strachan. I'm the current board president of the foundation after serving on this board for eight years. And I'm joined by our executive director, Erin Carlson. We'd like to share a few highlights from this year and a little forward-looking. This year, as you know, we've been celebrating our 25th anniversary. We began as an organization 25 years ago at a time of extreme budget cuts around the state. And three women got together and said that we have to do better. And so we are proud to say that we are here 25 years later, dreaming and envisioning what else is going to come in the next 25. These are some examples of work that we've helped support this year. The lovely earrings are from our friends at the Pointer Makerspace. Those were gifts that the students made for us after receiving grants for their Makerspace. We just We just finished our integrative grant cycle, which is an opportunity for educators, administrators, parent organizations to apply for grant funding. We did prize patrol last week, which meant showing up at schools and surprising folks with checks for programming that we will support next school year. Those could be small five-hundred-dollar checks that make a fifty-year-old woman cry because she's going to buy some books. To large projects, one example is at Evergreen Middle School where they will have technology that will allow them to communicate with the astronauts at the International Space Station. I will note off-script that this year we awarded a grant to the Century Drama Program because our board believes very strongly and firmly that arts and communication is a viable career path and that when students have the tools they need, like sewing machines, they will learn skills that are broader than the empathy that they are building in theater. Next slide. Thank you for being a part of our gala. It was an opportunity to celebrate and look back at what we've accomplished over the last twenty-five years and to really start to dream about what we hope for this community in the future. We shared some of those dreams last night, that night. We appreciate those of you who were able to be there with us, and we look forward to next year when all school board members attend. Next slide. These are some important dates that are coming up. As you all are thinking about wrapping up the school year and planning for the next, we are doing the same. So first and foremost, the most important night of the year in our minds is February twenty-first, 2026, which will be our twenty-sixth annual gala, which is our largest fundraiser of the year. This summer, we will have a couple of events. You'll see us at Hillsborough Market, in Tuesday Night Market. We have an event at Leggers in Sherwood on June the twenty-third as a pre-summer vacation launch that's a fundraiser for us. October fourth will be our second annual Five K Run and Walk, which is being sponsored by M'Gomma Brewing. We encourage you all to participate. And then in November, before the Thanksgiving break, is the Tamale Festival. So a couple of things that we'd like to highlight. This year alone, the foundation has donated over two-hundred-sixty-eight thousand dollars, six-hundred-seven dollars, which put us over the six-point-one-million-dollar mark over the last twenty-five years. We're pretty proud of that. We continue to believe in public education. Regardless of local, state, or federal matters, this foundation is here to make this community a better place. We're not going anywhere. We look forward to working with the school district and the school board in the next year to double our effort. We're anxious to hear your goals and to dream about what the next major initiative could be. And we hope that it something that continues to engage and empower all students. And I think Erin and I are setting a goal to double next year's gift. So with that, a big fancy check. Or if there's any questions, I suppose I should just raise a question.
Comments or questions?
I'd just like to say that I think everyone who's ever been involved in the Schools Foundation is amazing, and it's such a beautiful part of our community.
If you get a chance to participate in the surprise patrol, I suggest you do it. I did not this year, which I regret. Kind of everything didn't work out, but it is so much fun to walk into a classroom and give that teacher their grant, that they application. I'm glad I've never been asked to participate in the grant determination process because I'm sure it would be emotionally draining to choose one over someone else. But I'm so glad you guys are here, helping the district in the way that you do. Already put February twenty-first on my calendar for next year. I saw the cardboard box by the door when we came in and thought we would be getting a picture with a big check, and here we are.
There you go. Kim and Erin, you can get to the middle. I know Beth is going to want a photo.
I do just want to thank really quickly the foundation folks. I was able to testify at the gala about the change in my career once I got one of those grants and was able to build a network of folks around environmental education. So the grants really do change teachers' lives. So thank you for all the work that you do and the money that you raise for our school system. Much appreciated.
Our next agenda item is the financial report with District Financial Officer Scott.
Thank you Chair. The other thing I wanted to highlight for the board's attention tonight is you may have noticed that the financial report got a little longer this month. Going forward, I plan to include a couple of areas that we don't typically report on, including procurement contracts, the print shop, and tech integration, just to further increase kind of transparency for the board and all the things we're doing to support our schools. I'd be happy to take any questions the board has.
Any questions for Scott?
Scott, as always, thank you so much for your help. You stepped into big shoes and you are really filling them out. We deeply appreciate you. I want to say that I don't want the public or the community to think that because we don't have questions in this agenda or in this environment that we haven't asked questions. Because we generally go there sometimes, and we appreciate your patience. And thank you sincerely.
Thank you Director Thomas.
Thank you. We have five action items this evening. Our first is to adopt a supplemental transportation plan. Sayed, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt a supplemental transportation plan.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors adopt a supplemental transportation plan. Is there any further discussion? Now, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pandoha.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next agenda item is to declare surplus equipment and authorize disposal. Sayed, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, nothing further.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors declare the listed items as surplus and authorize the disposal in accordance with the district's surplus policy and procedures.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors declare the listed items as surplus and authorize the disposal in accordance with district's surplus policy and procedures. Is there any further discussion?
I'm looking forward to those five upright pianos finding a good home.
So are we.
Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick question. On the items that are auctioned, what happens to those funds?
They come, they come back to the district.
Are they in any specific bucket, or is it just general?
Scott, is there a specific bucket, is it a donation bucket?
I'd actually have to look into that. I don't know that I can find out, though.
Okay, thank you.
I thought in the past, in the prior year, we had done that. And it shows up the following year, on a line item. It is an adjustment.
Nancy, can you please talk right into your microphone? Thank you.
Sorry. I think it, I think you do tell us at some point down the line, and there is a line item. I just don't know what category it's in.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a line item. I just, exactly, I don't know if it goes in the general fund, or I don't want to give the board bad information, so let me research that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pandoha.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next agenda item is the City View Charter School Agreement Approval for 2025 to 2030. Scott, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Things I wanted to note for the board tonight, and I'm covering for myself on Brooke. I don't think, I didn't see Nicole, and I'm not sure if we have any City View board members here. Recognize them if we did. A couple of things that the board specifically asked us to include going forward. One was around more focus and communication recruitment of students that were in the focal group populations at City View that adhere to the overall integrated guidance plan. And I wanted you to know that in Section 6.3, we have agreed to such language between ourselves and City View. So that's an add to the contract, or the charter, I should say. And then secondly, we did end up with a five-year renewal. We did that in part because we felt it increased some accountability for discussions between both the boards and those of us that are representing you in those discussions. And so that'll allow for more frequent opportunity to come together and talk about those things. And the last thing I'll just say, Chair, plenty of questions you have, is the City View Board did ratify this charter on May twenty-first. So that's going to be over to our board.
Any other questions? Yes, Director Lopez?
Yeah, I think that was, the first issue that you mentioned was something, and you said that it's addressed on section, you said 6.3 of the charter.
Yeah, 6.3, Director. The very last paragraph, you'll see there, begins with alignment with the priorities of Hillsborough School District and City View Charter School.
Yeah, I think I was one of the persons that raised that issue when they came and presented their plan. And one of the things that I would like to just have like a follow-up, because they are going to be in the enrollment process, for them to just like, if there's something that they can give us an update on, like how did it go this year that you changed this process? That would be great.
I know they had some, we briefly discussed some nutrition services stuff, and I don't think any of that happened. But we have ongoing discussions with them about providing assistance with their nutrition programs? Or is, once this agreement settles, that's a thing we don't talk about anymore?
I don't believe we're planning that, at least as far as going within the charter. Director Watson?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the 2025-2030 City View Charter School Agreement.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the 2025-2030 City View Charter School Agreement. Is there any further discussion? Director McGuire?
Thank you. I was a little bit unsure, even skeptical at first, when we started discussing this because we've heard news reports in other states of charter schools not having sufficient accountability and sometimes potentially not enrolling students accessing special education and other services. And there were some well-publicized news reports about this charter school under previous leadership, having some negative situations that way. And so I was unsure at first. And then as we heard from the leadership and the parents and the students, and I had a chance to ask questions and find out more about what they do at City View and how they've moved beyond some of the problems that they had recently, I came away quite impressed. I feel like their, used to be called expeditionary learning, their project-based way of education really speaks to a lot of the students who are in that program. So I'm pleased to be able to vote yes, and I appreciate them working through and answering all of my questions and sharing with us how they serve their students and families. Every time I sit down with Travis and talk about the state of education, we always say a little bit of, are we sure the current system is the best one we've designed from the ground up? And I think that having alternate models like this really does speak to some students. I appreciate that we have that here in Hillsborough and that it does seem to really work well for some students.
Thank you Director McGuire, Director Lopez.
I also just wanted to say that I, it was unfortunate that the issues that came up to light are media issues. But it also provided an opportunity to have a conversation about our relationship with the charter. And I think the board that existed when the charter was first allowed to be in Hillsborough is a very different board that exists today. And also, our culture has changed a lot. So having an opportunity to revise and see where we're in alignment or not so much, and like the visions and goals, and how can we kind of align ourselves more. I think just thinking about moving forward, that we continue to have some sort of like check-in or a way of having more dialogue between us and the charter so that we, it doesn't go like ten years before we see them here at our board.
I know it makes more work for people, but I appreciate the five-year timeline as opposed to ten.
I would add, they do an annual report with us, which is coming up. And what I would request would be that they'd add some demographic data to show their progress on that goal you mentioned.
Thank you. Any other questions coming along? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I think there's a motion.
Yeah.
Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pandoha.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next agenda item is to review superintendent's performance and approve performance evaluation. I will now read the superintendent's evaluation letter. Dear Superintendent Ryman, the Hillsborough School District HSD Board of Directors has completed your evaluation for 2024-25 according to Policy CBG Evaluation of the Superintendent. This year's standards-based model include a pre-evaluation survey completed by individual board members, your self-evaluation that examines your leadership and operational performance, and a board discussion guided by an independent consultant. Thank you for your service to the HSD community in this, your second year as a superintendent. This board is keenly aware of and grateful for the many years of exemplary service you've provided to the Hillsborough School District during your career and has appreciated the growth in your leadership over the course of the last four years. As established and in alignment with COSA and OSBA guidelines, you are evaluated on nine standards for superintendent performance. One, visionary district leadership. Two, ethics and professional norms. Three, inclusive district culture. Four, culturally responsive instructional leadership and improvement. Five, communication and community relations. Six, effective organizational management. Seven, educational equity and cultural responsiveness. Oh no, I missed one. Effective financial management. Eight, policy, government, governance and advocacy. And nine, leadership for your educational equity and cultural responsiveness. Additionally, the board reviewed progress on two year, on year two, year two goals as determined by the board and the superintendent. Goal one, support action steps towards meeting Hillsborough School District's strategic plan target for two, for year two. Goal two, strengthen communication systems and advocacy between directors and superintendent. The board used the following four-point scoring system for each category. Four equals accomplished, three effective performance, two developing, one ineffective. Superintendent Ryman, the Board of Directors values your commitment to our community and district and your leadership towards our continuous improvement. The data from your evaluation shows that we are continuing to make improvements as you progress in your tenure. The board came to consensus on each rating of the nine standards, and each will be detailed below. As a board, we are proud to have you as our superintendent. Here are selected highlights from each of your nine standards. Standard one, visionary district leadership. The board assessed a score of three. Directors noted that you engaged the board and community in reviewing the implementation of the strategic plan at key points. We keep the board well-informed regarding relevant information impacting the district, the community, the state, and beyond. Standard two, ethics professional norms. The board assessed a score of three. Directors noted that your model ethical professional leadership, your influence on others, and your actions help make the district an inclusive, safe place for all students. your actions help make the district an inclusive, safe place for all students. Additionally, your role is in collective bargaining, demonstrated collaborative leadership. Standard three, inclusive district culture. The board assessed a score of three. Directors noted your clear commitment to creating an inclusive environment for all students, as evidenced by PACs, for example. The board encourages formalization of feedback loops with students and families to assess the impact of these inclusion efforts and help determine whether the system could be improved. Standard four, culturally responsive instructional leadership and improvement. The board assessed a score of four. The board felt that this is a model area of performance for you. You have integrated and disagreed data into strategic planning, which provides a clear picture of students' needs, and your focus on literacy is key for students' outcomes. You have shown a clear commitment to cultural responsiveness and inclusivity, and you share data that demonstrates where progress has been made and where work still needs to be done. Standard five, communication and community relations. The board assessed a score of three. The board feels that you are skilled communicator to the board and to families. You have broadened communication channels through coffee chats, social media, and bilingual videos. You have advocated for the district at local and state levels, including testifying at the Capitol with your leadership team. Hillsborough District, Hillsborough School District efforts are cited as exemplars by the Oregon Department of Education and the Governor's Office. Standard six, effective organizational management. The board assessed a score of three. Directors noted that your collaborative leadership style led to a successful conclusion to recent labor negotiations, and your relationships with the district's represented employee groups are strong. You have worked to improve staff professional development opportunities, staff retention, a grow-on-your-own program, and you have aligned hiring and evaluation process with a strategic plan. Standard seven, effective financial management. The board assessed a score of three. The board noted that you proactively communicate about the budget, potential upcoming budget reductions, and what actions will need to be taken in response to any potential budget shortfall. The board appreciates the many budget meetings you hold that provide clear and useful information. A suggestion for future focus is to present to the board more than one potential budget scenario when budget reductions are likely, if possible. Standard eight, policy, governance, and advocacy. The board assessed a score of three. The board noted that you have been supportive in updating policies and governance systems, including contributing to the drafting of the district's legislative priorities. At the state level, you are involved with the Governor's Accountability Task Force, and your involvement benefits the district. Standard nine, leadership for educational equity and cultural responsiveness. The board assessed a score of three. The board found that you demonstrate a commitment to equity and improved results for underserved students by embedding equity goals into school improvement plans, advocating for bilingual assessments, and setting the expectation that the work of the district be tied to the strategic plan. Goal one, support action steps towards meeting Hillsborough School District strategic plan targets for year two. The board assessed a score of three. The board noted that you have been supportive of the third-grade reading metric, ninth-grade on track, and graduation rates in particular. Graduation rates have increased, which is exciting progress. Some of the indicators in this school have not yet been met, and the board is interested in how you will build a plan to continue to address those indicators. Goal three, and then goal two, strengthen communications systems and advocacy between directors and superintendent. The board assessed a score of three. Communication between you and the board has improved, as evidenced by a more regular schedule of meetings with individual board members and small group meetings. Additionally, you engage with other district leaders about current legislative efforts. A suggestion for future focus is to work to distill complex issues into actionable items for board members, including specifics about what a board member's voice and perspective can help elevate if given a scenario and a request for action. Superintendent Ryman, as we approach the conclusion of your second year as a superintendent of the Hillsborough School District, it is clear that you are growing into your role with confidence and skill. You often humbly mention that the success of HSD heavily relies on your great team. We believe the tone and model set for the team begins at the top. We are excited to monitor your continuous improvement at HSD as HSD strives to embody our motto, know value and empower every student to achieve their dream. Thank you for all you do that makes us proud to be HSD. Infinitely, the Board of Directors.
I'd just say thank you. That was a lot to write and to read out loud. And I do want to thank the Cabinet team and our entire staff of HSD. If I've been successful at all, it's because I feel the support of a great team, the school board, and all of our community partners. So, thank you very much for taking the time to engage in the process and give me the feedback. Appreciate it.
With that, would anyone like to?
I move that the Board of Directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of the Hillsborough School District and direct that the evaluation letter be placed in his personnel file.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Watson, seconded by Director Thomas, that the Board of Directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of the Hillsborough School District and direct that the evaluation letter be placed in his personnel file. Is there any further discussion?
Having had to be the person who has to read that, thank you for all your extra efforts, reading it, crafting it, and leading us through the process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Director Watson. Rose, can you call the roll, please? Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Our last action item is to approve superintendent contract. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors approve the individual contract with the superintendent effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Second. It has been moved by Director Lopez, seconded by Director Thomas, that the Board of Directors approve the individual contract with the superintendent effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Is there any further discussion?
Rose, can you call the roll, please? Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have one policy AR on the agenda tonight. Audrey and Travis, do you have anything else you'd like to add? That concludes our agenda items and brings us to HCU HEA report.
Good evening, Chair Pantoja, Vice Chair Watson, fellow school board members, Superintendent Ryman, and administrative leaders. My name is Mary-Kate Babcock. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a proud music educator of 28 years, and I'm honored to serve as the Hillsborough Education Association President. Members were deeply concerned to learn of HSD's $20 million deficit and the significant impact and the proposed reduction in force at last month's school board meeting. While staffing decisions have been made, how we acknowledge them matters. We know that our school leaders can help communities move forward by recognizing the impacts of positions lost in ways that are dignified and human-centered. Many longtime staff have shared with me that after years of dedication to our district, they feel reduced to being just a number. That's painful to hear, and we must take it seriously. We have to do better, and I urge all of us to be more responsive, more compassionate, more present for our members during this time of uncertain student transition. Superintendent Ryman, thank you for taking the first step this evening by offering your public apology to our students and families, and for the update regarding the future steps regarding Centry's theater program. I would like to ask that you all please consider the following recommendations to further repair relationships throughout our school and community, as this has not been consistent district-wide. Please implement a communication system ensuring that staff emails and concerns, especially those involving transfers, staffing assignments, and workload are acknowledged in a timely manner, with clear timelines for follow-up. This simple act of responsiveness can rebuild confidence and trust. In the coming weeks, district and building leaders should provide time for those who request it, to hear directly from educators about their concerns, their questions, and their ideas for support. These individual sessions should focus on solutions in restoring relationships and connection. Publicly commit to ensuring that any future staffing transitions will be communicated with empathy, consistency, and clarity. District and school leaders should be present and accessible and willing to explain the why behind every decision, even when those conversations are hard. These are reasonable, actionable steps that require more heart than funding. At this moment, our educators are not asking for perfection, much like what they are asked to give our students every day. They're asking for presence, they're asking for clarity, they're asking for support and care and guidance from their leadership. Let's not lose any more staff emotionally or physically because we failed to show up for those who remain. Let's commit to doing better together. Part two. I want to say thank you, HSD, for inviting HEA to meet with Congresswoman Suzanne Von Amici last month on April 22nd. Fortunately, I had the opportunity to speak with her previously to Labor Roundtable. Together, we discussed key education advocacy issues to take back to her colleagues in Washington, DC. One, fully fund the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, also known as the IDEA Act and Title I. I asked her to please urge Congress to fulfill its funding promises to support special education and low-income students, relieving districts from cutting essential services. Two, expand college access. Increase and stabilize Pell Grants and student aid to help first-generation and low-income students afford higher education. Three, protect the U.S. Department of Education. Strengthen, not dismantle, the department's role in civil rights enforcement, funding equity and federal oversight. Strengthen the educator pipeline. Support policies that improve recruitment and retention, including loan forgiveness, service scholarships, residency programs, and stipends for student teachers. Prioritize mental health and school safety. Invest in more counselors, more social workers, and more mental health staff, especially in underserved community. Close the digital divide. Provide funding for school infrastructure upgrades and equitable access to high-speed internet and technology. And lastly, defend federal civil rights protections. Ensure civil rights enforcement remains a strong federal responsibility to protect all students across all of our states. Part two of part two. Thank you again for partnering with HEA to support our school funding town hall on April 23rd. We estimated that 600 to 650 people attended our town hall. By the end of the evening, it was clear to our legislators that our community is united around these key issues. Pay equity is essential for part-time community college faculty. Class size and caseload matter. Students need individualized attention, and educators need manageable workloads. The cap on special education funding must be lifted, so students receive services they are entitled to. High-cost disability grants must be increased to ensure our most impacted students get the support they need. School funding must exceed the current $11.36 billion proposal if we are to provide the schools our students and our families and our educators deserve. Fully funding education is not optional, it's essential. We must keep advocating because the legislative long session isn't over. Oregon Education Association is calling on our members to contact their legislators. We cannot remain silent as an estimated 750 educators across the state are facing job loss. Our members are anxious, our members are fearful about how schools will function next year under these cuts. In response to the current crisis, I want to share an opportunity for collective action for everybody in this room. On Thursday, June 5th, there will be a school funding rally at the Capitol in Salem from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Union leaders from across the state will come together to demand funding our schools deserve. I invite you, school board members, HSD leaders, to attend if you are able. We know that showing up in solidarity matters. Our presence sends a powerful message. We must fully fund our schools to avoid the crisis we are currently facing today. Part three. Lastly, we look forward to continuing our partnership with each of you to support our educators, our students, and our greater HSD community. I invite you all, school board members, to meet with me one-on-one over the summer months to discuss how we can work even more collaboratively and effectively as thought partners. Congratulations to the newly-elected school board members who will serve HSD from 2025 to 2029. Jessica Hardine Mercado, Position 1. Mark Watson, Position 2. Nancy Thomas, Position 3. And Katie Rhine, Position 6. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, Mary-Kate. Anyone from HCU? Okay, then this brings us to discussion time, and we will start off with our student representative. Gwen?
Hello, everyone. I'm Gwen. As a student of Centry myself, I see the impacts of our programs every day, and my main value has always been community, and I can only hope that we will be able to preserve Centry's theater community. And I honestly believe that we will, just by seeing the passion I saw tonight towards our theater program. I know that with this kind of passion, there is no way that theater will totally diminish, just because of how passionate you guys are. Honestly, beyond this, though, I know that our teachers and principals in district want to support students. So, to accomplish this, I hope that you guys will continue to speak of our needs so that everyone understands exactly what we want.
All right, so, I'm biased, but I have been at the Centry Theater Program since my freshman year. I've gone through Theater Foundations, Theater 2 and Theater 3. I was planning on going Theater 4. I'm not going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about everyone else, because that's who I'm supposed to be representing. If I could have all the people at Centry sit in this chair, if they would fit, I would rather they be here than me. I am here to represent HOA, but I have found so much passion for this school district as a whole, and I've just been really, really moved to see so many of my classmates here. I want to say that I did follow up with the board on all the issues that we've had during the upstairs session. I was very happy to hear that they would listen to me and that they would hear out my issues. Nancy was like, you don't have to speak for them right now, you don't have to put together what they want if you're not ready. I'm like, no, they want better communication, they want to know that their theater is safe, they want to know their capstone's and career and all that. It's a lot of big asks, and honestly, I mean, I was very polite up there, and that limits me. So, I've been really, really happy to be able to see the community that I've been a part of show up, and I really, really feel deeply for the arts, and I definitely made the point upstairs that it really is... really feel deeply for the arts. And I definitely made the point upstairs that it really is just as important as our special education funding. It's just as important as any other diverse group, I would say. Because theater attracts people who want to build a sense of confidence, who have the confidence to step out, to make a step, but not the confidence yet to step out into the bigger picture. Like, it is a first step. Honestly, I don't think I would be here if I did not go to the Century Theater Program. If I did not participate in it, I don't think I would have had the confidence to sign up for this. So I understand times are tough, and I know we've had the discussion upstairs, and it generally is a many-person, big issue. Its numbers are looking bad. But I can say it because I only have one more meeting. I really do hope you guys find a way to reconsider or find a better solution. So, thank you. Thank you all for being here. It really means a lot to me to see all of you.
Thank you. And Gwen, Superintendent Ryman?
Thank you, Gwen and Abe, for your words upstairs and now. I appreciate it. Congratulations to Directors Thomas and Watson reelection, and future directors Katie Rhine and Jessica Harding Mercado, welcome. I appreciate the advocacy for more accurate and adequate funding for K-12 in Oregon. I just want to tell you all that with the current economic forecast that was released a couple of weeks ago, we are hearing a lot of pessimism about the investment in schools. And whereas we had hoped that there would be an increased investment in raising the special education cap and compensating districts for high-cost disability, I see those conversations getting very cool. And I'm worried. And I would ask for everybody to continue to advocate for 1136 recommended by the governor and the co-chairs as just foundational to us, basically with our budget situation, being able to balance our budget going into next year. If we start hearing talk that school districts don't need 1136, it's wrong. I also want to say that our staffing transfers are driven by seniority and that we follow the collective bargaining agreement with an incredibly high level of integrity, and we collaborate across this district to figure out who has the licensure and the seniority to go to which spot. And that does seem brutal. And it disrupts careers, and it disrupts where teachers see themselves contributing in the school community. And it's also part of our contract, which we follow to a T. I also want to offer that this is an incredible time of celebration if you're out there and engaged in the community. We have performances, senior project nights, and graduations going on this week and next and last week. And just when I think I'm tired out in the springtime, I go to a senior project night and look at students' projects, and I'm reinvigorated when I see the incredible things that students are doing. I also do want to thank you for a favorable evaluation tonight, and I want to credit my team in the cabinet group, and then also the support of the board and community partners in helping us engage voices around the community, make really tough decisions, and also promote the incredible innovations that are going on in HSD. Thank you for allowing me to lead in this community.
Thank you, Superintendent Ryman. We will now move to Board of Directors. Director Lopez?
I'm thinking she was online. Okay, it's me. This is my second to my last board meeting, so I'm already a little bit sad about it. But I'm really excited for new board members to come in and new ideas, new points of view, and just the continued evolution of our district board, our district culture. Just thinking about, you know, I'll get into that spiel for my last meeting next month. But I really appreciate just the community and coming out and speaking about your experience and the things that we can do better. We're always listening. I know we don't really engage because that's your time and it's limited. And so we want to make sure that we hear everybody that's here to speak. But I am a Century alumni, and I was just at Century last Monday, which is really nice to go back there. And, you know, thinking about theater and arts, also just was thinking about my own personal experience. And I also just think that this is a larger conversation. I know that right now it seems very, it's a very sharp pain point. But I think it is a larger conversation for just us to think about. And it is challenging. You know, we get budget from the state, and they don't know how much they're going to give us. And it's a guessing game until we're still guessing right now. And we don't want to say, hey, it's going to be this much, because we don't want to alarm people and then, because we're not sure yet. But it's, you know, we're already in June, and we're still, we still don't know how much they're going to give us. And so it's very, it's really hard to be in this position of how we fund education in the state. And I know that every district struggles with this formula that we have that doesn't really work for us. And so every year, we have to go and advocate. But I do think about, like, how do we solve for things more in our little community and more locally? And, you know, thinking about, like, our fee structure and not creating, we also don't want to create barriers for people to participate, but also maybe it's okay if we charge a little bit so that we can keep certain things. So just, I think what I'm left with is also thinking about recruitment, you know, at the elementary and middle school levels for forecasting, and how do we improve that for future years? And it was a very different experience when I went to school, and the demographics of our community looked very different as well. But I'm hoping also, like, being culturally responsive. I never saw people that looked like me in those programs. So there was not really plays or things where I saw myself in those roles. And so I think when we think about the recruitment and the students that could participate, is how do we cast that wider net to make sure that they see themselves, that the stories that we tell are stories that they can connect with. And I think that will help us in these efforts of having sustainability for longer term, looking at our demographics of our community, and then also how do we partner with our families, our students, of having these conversations, of figuring things out. Because as much as I want to say, like, every year, we're hoping that the formula changes, but it's been eight years I've been on this board and it's still the same. So I think sometimes we have to solve for these issues here at home, and we have to figure out how to come together and do that. So I just appreciate all your different points of views and all the information that you brought because it really made me think more about this. And I still live in Hillsborough, I'm not going anywhere, so I'm still going to be showing up here, maybe giving public comment too, just to keep you on your toes. But thank you again for coming out. I know it takes a lot to be vulnerable, especially of something that you care about and that is near and dear to your heart, and to speak publicly in a public setting. But that's because you care. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Lopez. Director Ward?
Good evening, everyone. And I echo that welcome and thank you for coming and speaking and voicing your concerns for the issues that are going on at Century. I am confident that the district will be able to communicate more effectively in the future and to provide some viable alternatives. They're working on that as the superintendent stated. So I'm grateful to hear that. Thanks for HSF and the work that's being done there and the support for the school district. Thanks to the cabinet for always answering all the questions that I have. And I appreciate, again, the audience members coming out and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ward. Director Thomas?
I have a few things for this evening, so please bear with me. First and foremost, to our students, to the families, to the teachers, and to everyone who spoke tonight, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking your truth. And you have been heard. I need you to understand that. You have been heard. I wanted to say thank you to our student directors who were upstairs knocking it out of the park. When Abraham turned around his computer and he said, I've got 2,000 signatures, I went, whoa, wait a minute, 2,000. So I think what I'm really saying is I'm proud of you guys. That's what this is about. You being a part of this right here, that's what this is about. But it also means that this is the place that we have to be even when the decision is hard. It is never easy. Never. When you don't have what you need for everyone, everyone. I always say that if I had the money, all the teachers would have everything they needed. And every district would have had everything they needed. I say that out of love, because it's true. Because if I could make it happen, I would. Unfortunately, we live in a different world. But I want you to know that you've been heard. And I'm thanking you for coming. And I'm not always the most optimistic person, but I'm going to take, thank you, Monique, for being optimistic. And I'm hoping that we can find some type of resolution so that we don't forget anybody, so that we're not inclusive for everybody. It's important. And so I'm hoping that we can actually do that. So I'm going to remain hopeful. And I also want to humbly apologize that apparently our sincere intent did not equal our impact. Sometimes that happens, and we're sorry. We will do better. Can't guarantee that you that you're going to get what you need, but we will do better. The other thing I needed to say was congratulations to my new colleagues. We spent a lot of time together over the past four, five months. It's, I can't believe it's over. It's actually over. So thank you and congratulations to Jessica and Katie. And we are really, really looking forward to working with you. And I'm glad we had an opportunity to establish a relationship. And I can't wait to work with you all. I wanted to say thank you to Director Lopez. I cannot believe this is her second class meeting. It's hard to believe. But I know that we have her commitment to assist us in the future on some really important efforts. So I'm really, really super, super glad about that. So thank you. Thank you so much. No way I would have been able to do what we just pulled off for that. So thank you. The other, the last part of my update is the difficult part of my other job, which is legislation. Legislatively speaking, I've never seen anything like this. I guess this is my welcome to Oregon. I thought I'd been here for a couple of years, maybe eight, maybe nine. I get it. I don't know. But overall, I did want to let the board know, let the public know that legislatively, overall, funding projections continue to not be positive. Superintendent Ryman is correct. We started out telling them, everybody told them, Mary Kay told them, everybody told them exactly what we needed in order to forget current service level so that we can give you everything you need. That was about $12.3 billion. What we came out with was we might get $11.36, and now they're saying it might be less than that. If you have a senator, if you have someone that's represented, and please tell them how you feel, this cannot continue. I have never lived in a state who does this. Doesn't mean I'm trying to leave you. I'm just telling you that this is madness of a propensity I have never seen. And it cannot continue. It is not sustainable. There is a bill, an additional number two, is a bill regarding a ban on cell phones in classrooms. I don't, the look on your face, sweetheart, tells me everything I need to know. Yes, believe it or not, there is a bill that is moving through, and it may just pass. And it is about a ban on cell phones in school. They're trying to make it from, did it finally die? Jeez. Okay. Well, my last Friday, the update that we got was that there was all these different amendments that were going to it. And we're like, really? Really? Can you just let us handle our business, please? You get the funding that we need and stop messing with me. Sorry. That's what I was thinking. The other bill is a bill associated with mandatory bargaining for class size. It's possible that may come to a vote. If you don't know the particulars, look it up. And the legislature is very interesting. But I want you to know that that is coming. The other thing is a bill associated with unemployment benefits for striking teachers and staff. That may also come to a vote, and that will decimate our budgets. It also appears that there is a much-needed, the bill that we really wanted, the bill that we were fighting for, the cap on special education and additional funding for education, which we absolutely need, as I understand it, it's almost dead. Like, nobody's talking about it. Like, they don't want to, you, I'm looking at your sign that says, here the drama. This is the drama. This is the drama. I would much rather be on a stage someplace trying to tell somebody how crazy this is. It is what it is. I just want to say that I continue to participate on a weekly meeting with OSBA, and I will continue to commit to advise you all as we go and the board. And I'm trying to get better so that next year I have it on a much more consistent basis, and I will put it in writing so that I can take all of the emotion and all of the emoting out of my voice. But I will say that we are moving toward the end of the long session, and all I can say is may God have mercy on us all.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Director McQuaid?
Thank you. Thinking over everything Nancy shared with us, that was a very good update. I appreciate all that information about what's happening. I think when I heard in the past few days about this very significant decision, that for the first time in many years, one of our comprehensive high schools won't have a theater elective program, I think it struck me as very significant, even more so than other electives, because theater in high schools is such a hallmark of American culture. I think there's historians of theater that have said, what plays are put on in high schools throughout recent history tells us a lot about how the culture of our nation has changed. It's a very special thing, beyond just to us as individuals, really to our entire community. I think it's a real honor that so many felt their lives were so affected by their time with you. And so I think that's what greater impact could be had than to be surrounded by people who detest to that and were so proud to have teachers like you in Hillsborough. Many of us, and myself, I know, will have had experiences similar to what was shared by a couple of folks, that certain programs, certain spaces, when we were young, gave us a sense of safety, a sense of belonging. And so I very much identify with that. I think all of us ought to be open to constructive feedback, but especially those positions of responsibility. So I think it's great, good for our leadership roles in our district to reflect on the fact that so many members of our beloved community here today didn't feel like the communication was in a way that met their needs. And I trust, I know these people, they will reflect on that. I just say also, it may not feel like, because this is such a disappointing thing, it may not feel like a good message. But I do want to say that this really is a unique strength of our local democracy, that you can come here and share these stories directly with people who make these decisions. And other countries, France, Germany, Japan, around the world, don't have this level of local governance. And this is how participatory democracy is supposed to work. So thank you for being here. I think to those of you who are here as students, I'd just say that in the years ahead, you'll encounter many other things that seem unfair or affect you negatively. And if you take the same earnest intent, the willingness to put yourself out there, to share your stories and how it impacts you, and to make your voice heard, then that will have a very positive impact on the world. So it's really great that you do this, and I encourage you to continue to do that in the days ahead.
Thank you, Director McQuaid. Director Watson?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to Hillsborough Schools Foundation for 25 years of service to our district and to our community. Over $6 million raised for amazing programs over and over, that you've heard all the, I'm the current service level budget guy, so you don't need to hear me start talking about that because I think we don't have that kind of time. So all these programs that we cannot support as a district, like Hillsborough Schools Foundation finds ways, all of our innovation labs and all of our middle schools, that that's a direct result of the investment that Hillsborough Schools Foundation made, helping middle schoolers figure out what they might want to be. So grateful for you guys to be here, grateful for your efforts, and thanks for bringing the big check as always. Speaking of celebrations of things, we got to have the Chris Lappala Awards this we got to have the Crystal Apple Awards this past week. Was it only a week ago? Feels like it might have been a week ago, whatever. It was so awesome to be able to attend that event and see so many of our district employees be honored. Congratulations, Superintendent Raymond, like figuring out how to honor Deanna on that. Like, Deanna Palm has been a driving force of that for so long, and she's retiring. And at the end of it, they gave her a Crystal Apple Award. So for however many 20 years we've been doing this, and she finally got her own Crystal Apple. So that was very heartwarming to be there for that. Thank you to all the folks that are here. Nobody thinks less of anybody when they speak to the board and leave. But I will say it's pretty great when you stick it out for a whole entire time when you're still sitting here. So thank you for being with us tonight and sharing your stories. I don't know how much of upstairs you were able to catch, but I mean, I was a Century parent long before I was a school board member, so I was a Century parent. So immediately, I was on the phone with Assistant Superintendent Neville, like, I need to know the details of this. What's going on? And I don't want to put anybody on the spot tonight, but expect more hard questions and emails that you'll have time to reflect on. Don't want to say for sure, but ultimately, I need to reflect on some stuff myself. But also, like, it's probably going to be the end of the email. It will likely be, is this a bell that cannot be unrung? So just be ready for that. And thank you to Katie and Jessica for getting to know you guys a little bit. I look forward to serving with you. Thank you to Hillsborough for picking me to come back to this chair. Really appreciate it. And to Patrick's point, like, just for, just for democracy, that means you should have access to people you elected. So I have to clear out of this room a little bit. But if y'all, anybody wants to stay late, we can be outside, and you can yell at me individually if you want to. Because I feel like that's part of the job of being elected.
Thank you, Director Watson. I wanted to begin by saying I wholeheartedly agree with the comments made by my fellow board colleagues of the representation that has come tonight. You know, this is part of the job. And I appreciate, you know, you voicing your concerns because it is part of the job, and we need to hear it directly from our students and families that are decisions. Decisions we make, you know, impact you. And I also wanted to say thank you to Director Lopez for the eight years she has given to HSD as a board member and all of your knowledge and experience and everything you have brought to this district. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I also want to congratulate Director Thomas and Watson on the reelection wins and my new fellow colleagues, Katie and Jessica. I'm excited to work along with you at the beginning of this summer. And this is a prime example of what the work that we do entails. I also wanted to say thank you to the cabinet team for all the work that you do